So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the September 20th, 2022, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor White if he would come forward to give us an invocation. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
Let us pray. God of grace and God of mercy, we invite your spirit into this place to preside over this meeting. We ask that you and you alone lead and guide us in this board meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be effective and decisive in their decision-making for this county. We pray that your spirit would move to promote unity. May there be a spirit of camaraderie and a desire to work together in their shared vision and mission. We pray that you will be like a well-watered garden in their lives, like a spring whose water never fails. We pray that they will be indeed fruitful, for we realize that the harvest is indeed plentiful, but the workers are few. So strengthen them, strengthen them, Lord, for their work in Calvert County. Now let us all pray as your son taught us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us for our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty to judge by justice.
So, thank you Pastor White for coming in this morning and joining us. Pastor White comes to us from Friendship United Methodist Church, and Pastor Weems is very appreciative when we have other pastors show up, and we don't have to put him on the spot. So, thank you so much for coming in this morning. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any addictions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, I have a couple of public service announcements. This is National Preparedness Month. So far, we haven't had a hurricane, but we are in hurricane season, so we just want to remind everyone out there to make sure you're prepared, especially those that live in low-lying areas that are subject to flooding, that you have a prepared kit, and that you pay attention to any warnings that you may receive from Calver County Government about issues that may be rising. The Calver County Fair starts this coming, next, not this coming, next Wednesday, and we'll run from Wednesday to Sunday. Just want to express our appreciation. Last week, we ran a Calvex Drill, which is Emergency Preparedness Drill. Want to thank all the employees and all those representing outside organizations for their participation. You know, when we drill, it makes us better what we need to do, when we need to do it. So, I want to thank all those that participated in that event. And on this day, in 1884, the poem "The Star-Spangled Banner" was first printed as a song in both the Baltimore Patriot and the American newspapers. Originally titled "The Defense of Fort McHenry," the poem was composed by Francis Guy Key after witnessing the British bombardment of Fort McHenry in Baltimore. So, today is quite an event in our history. I believe that's all I have at this time. So, the next item of business is Proclamations, and the first one we have is for Emergency Preparedness Month. Mr. Gadway?
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here for this proclamation? Emergency services, please come on up, say who you are at the microphone, and come on up and join. And if you have any other comments, please feel free.
Emergency Management Specialist Kara Buckmaster. Download the app Calvert Prepare to be prepared.
We're going to get you to plug that again in a minute.
All right.
Emergency Management Analyst Colton Poundsbury.
That's it? Come on.
She took your speech, right?
So, you could have plugged it again. So, what's the, what's the app?
Calvert Prepare.
Yeah, the app is Calvert Prepare. It's on both Apple and Android. We send out preparedness tips. You can build an emergency kit and a family communication plan and find all sorts of good information on being prepared for Calver County residents.
Fantastic. Quite a few years ago, after Hurricane Katrina and Rita, my daughter and I went down and we saw devastation that we'd never thought we'd ever see or anything like that, and we were seeing people that were without services for weeks and months after that. And anybody can easily prepare a 72-hour kit, right? And we think about the winter or the summer storms, the hurricanes, and this and that. One of the things we noticed over the last few years, snow knocks out power too, snow and ice. And people can go in some of the neighborhoods right around here, they don't even think that they're vulnerable to it, but two, three, four days without powering their houses. And when it's cold, you got no heat unless you've got some external heat source. So, I urge people to take a look at what they have around their house and think, what would happen if I didn't have these services, didn't have electricity or something like that for three days? And then start taking and preparing for that. Doesn't have to be expensive. When you go to the grocery store, you can buy an extra gallon of water. Even when you go somewhere else, you can buy an extra something here, an extra couple of batteries there. You don't have to do it all at once. You can do it over a period of time, but the sooner you're, sooner you're prepared, the better you're prepared. So, whereas, emergency preparedness is a shared responsibility of the entire nation. Every community, business, family, and individual has a role in planning and preparing for emergencies and disasters of all kinds. And whereas, Maryland Preparedness Month provides an opportunity to highlight the important role of citizens as they prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools, and communities. This nationwide observance encourages all Americans to learn more about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas, the United States Department of Homeland Security and Citizen Corps urge all Americans to take the time to get an emergency kit, make a family emergency plan, be informed about different threats and their appropriate responses, and get involved in preparing their community. And whereas, Calver County recognizes the importance of preparing for potential emergencies and is proud to observe appropriate events, preparedness, information, and activities this month. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that September 2022 be known as Calver County Preparedness Month. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are urged to join with the Calver County Department of Public Safety and Division of Emergency Management in carrying the message of preparedness to the community, given under our hands and sealed this 20th day of September 2022, signed by all Commissioners. Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is Proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. Commissioner Weems.
Do we have any representatives? Please come forward. Please introduce yourself.
I feel like I've introduced myself here in front of the board many times. Thank you for having us, Commissioner. My name is Pam Pierce, and I'm one of the clinical supervisors at Calver County Behavioral Health. We're here today to talk about Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, which is September. It's only one month out of the year, so, you know, suicide prevention and awareness is a 12-month, 24/7 job. And it takes a community for us all to be aware about what's going on in our community, specifically and also in our world, because it affects all of us. I have a couple, just a few stats that I want to just kind of put out that are interesting. It's the second-leading cause of death among people ages 15 to 24. So, think about that. You know, teenagers just starting life are wanting to end their lives more than any. Nearly 20% of our high school students report serious thoughts of suicide, and 9% have made an attempt to take their own life. That's pretty impactful. So, what, that's sort of a big talking point, is what's happening with our students and our children in this community. However, you know, we are blaming everything on the pandemic, but since 2020, we have seen, I'm sorry, 2000, we've seen a 4.5 increase in that age in our, in our little kids of suicidal thoughts and attempts. And that's significant, even prior to the pandemic. So, then we put the pandemic and isolation and separation from friends and family on top of that. So, it'll be interesting to see those statistics in a few years. So, this is an important month for us. At Calver County Behavioral Health, we, our prevention team has done some calendar work where they got some daily things out there on social media to people, some positive thoughts. As well, Stephanie Dayton, who is there with me today, she is, get up here, girl. She is a special coordinator at our agency. She works with me, and we present suicide awareness classes for the community. We're doing that actually this weekend. We have the next one coming up. We have our newest employee, Megan Smith. She's going to be walking in and taking three of our elementary schools, so we're going to get more services out to our kids, which I'm excited about, because we've had some real decline in our job, you know, people who are ready to do this job. So, we welcome Megan. And of course, everybody knows, ten from Maryland, from our community resources, and she's been super, super supportive about prevention for suicide and any other kinds of mental health, things that we do. So, thank you for that.
So, if somebody's looking for help, what phone number can they call?
What's the 1-800 number for our mobile crisis? I knew, I knew that was going to come up. I should have written it down. So, the main number you can always call is 410-535-3079. That's with Calver County Behavioral Health, and they can always connect to you with services. Crisis Intervention and the Mobile Crisis Unit can be reached from that basic number. Yeah. We also have a 1-800 number, and I'm sorry.
The mobile crisis number is 1-877-467-5628, or 1-877-467-5M A T.
Thank you.
Do we have that on any kind of, Linda, do we have that on any kind of website or anything like that?
We probably do, but I'll check it.
So, for those of you out there that can't write as fast as they talk, like I just did. The number is 410-535-3079.
Correct.
And the message here is, there's help out there. If you see somebody you're concerned about, please call. Doesn't cost anything to call. And I think this past year, with the pandemic, you know, we saw a rise in the increase in the bridge suicides, which get highlighted. What doesn't get highlighted so much is the other ones that occur in the quiet and nobody really knows about. And to me, it's shocking to hear that the highest age group is from 17 to 24. I mean, it's just, I just can't imagine.
And social media and some of our tech programs have been wonderful additions, as well as the demise of some people who don't have the awareness of how to get help, and they're seeking help in the wrong direction. You know, one of the things that I always say is, nothing makes, talking about mental health, talking about our challenges in the world, talking about depression, talking about suicide, does not increase the numbers. It's when we don't talk about it and we don't reach out to help. So, I stand with you, you know, Commissioner Hans, in the sense of that there is help posted everywhere. It's everywhere in this school. I mean, we're present in the school. Our mobile crisis and emergency services are in the schools. It's everywhere, and we still have students that are suffering. We have people just in our community that they're not able to reach out, and it's difficult. It carries a lot of shame, but talking about it doesn't make it worse. Talking about it makes it better.
So, recently, we were at the Chesapeake Beach for the Drug Overdose Awareness Ceremony.
Yeah, that's right.
And, you know, people talk about, sometimes they don't see any signs, sometime they do see signs, and they just don't know where to go.
Exactly.
They don't think there's anybody out there to help. You know, they're ashamed or embarrassed to ask for help, but, you know, there's, there's nothing to be ashamed or embarrassed about. You know, you just reach a point, hopefully, where you're willing to ask for help instead of taking that final step. And just want to reiterate, there are lots of programs and resources out there to help you, help someone else, or help yourself. Alls it takes is a phone call.
Or even just asking a friend. Sometimes people know.
Yeah.
You know, word comes out, we're still a small county, we're circle speaking, and there are many people that are well aware of services, Calver Behavioral Health, but we also have some private services in the county as well. Anybody, but you know, if I turn to somebody like Stephanie and said, you know, I'm really struggling today, that's just a person, and she's going to say, okay, let's figure out what we need to do. There are more people like that in everybody's lives than people want to admit. I mean, I could probably walk up to Mark Willis and say, I'm having a really hard time. And he'd sit down and talk to me, and then he'd say, let's find the service. You know, so people we know pretty close and people that we aren't even that close to, we can ask for help.
And you shouldn't be afraid to ask the question. If you see somebody you think is struggling, you should not be afraid to ask the question, because if you don't, it can be too late.
You should come and be a guest speaker, of course, because those are the things that exactly we talk about. You know, asking somebody if they're having thoughts of suicide or if they are going to kill themselves, that doesn't put the idea in their minds. It doesn't increase the risk of suicide, because somebody very, who isn't thinking about it, is going to be quick to say, no, I'm not thinking about it. I'm having a really hard time now. And so, just asking that question lets them know that you're serious about how they're doing or how they're not doing, you know, and willing and able to hear it. So, yeah, good point.
Yeah, you have to be strong.
Mrs. May.
I'm sorry, I've extended this, but...
Yes, he has.
Well, we need to get to public hearing, so we need time. Mark Willis, County Administrator, would you expand a little bit on the, on the number of individuals that are impacted by a single suicide?
Absolutely.
It's covered in the proclamation, but I don't think people are aware, and in that number oftentimes leads to another suicide, which then expands that number even greater. So, that's something I think will shock most people.
So, just very briefly, at a recent summit, I know Stephanie was on the summit as well as I was, we captured a statistic that 135 individual people are impacted by one single death from suicide. That's, that's powerful. I think about one single suicide in a high school. How many children are in a high school? So, I think the number, when I look at it, is small, but we have the statistics that say 135 people, directly or indirectly. And so, then, our statistics regarding if you are exposed to suicide, whether it's somebody that is close to you or not, your risk of dying by suicide increases as well. That's when people are the most vulnerable, is right after they've been exposed to the knowledge of or the experience, you know, with somebody who has died by suicide. That's a, that's a big one. Thank you for bringing that up.
Commissioner Weems? Sorry.
No. If you ladies would please come forward. Whereas, suicide is the leading cause of death among all age groups and is the third leading cause of death among individuals ages 10 through 34 in Maryland. And whereas, it is estimated that in 2020, there were 1.2 million suicide attempts in the United States. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control has reported 585 people died by suicide in Maryland in 2020, and 135 people are exposed by a single suicide loss. And whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas, organizations such as the Maryland Suicide Prevention and Early Intervention Network, M D dash S P I N, the Governor's Commission on Suicide Prevention, and the Calver County Health Department resolve to integrate and coordinate suicide prevention activities across multiple sectors and settings, develop and implement strategies to improve access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services, advocate for ending the disparities in access to mental health care for underrepresented groups, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities, promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide, and that suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with a mental health condition. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of September 2022 be known as Suicide Awareness Prevention Month in Calver County, and urge all residents to recognize that suicide is a public health issue which everyone has a responsibility to acknowledge and prevent. Be it further proclaimed that, by this action, the Board of County Commissioners commends all organizations for providing superior initiative, leadership, support, and commitment for their daily vital contributions to suicide prevention, given under our hands and seal this 20th day of September 2022.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one, two, three.
The pastor's taken that. So, once again, those of you out there that need help or see someone that needs help, that number is 410-535-3079, or 1-877-467-5628. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an award for Employee Recognition Committee. Lisa?
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, very important topic. I do want to stress the past topic that, you know, has affected me personally since the first time I was 15 years old. So, everything you said really hit home, and I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you for taking the time out for that. That was important. So, whew, my name is Lisa Talome. I am Community Resource Specialist, and I am here today as the Employee Recognition Commission Chairperson to celebrate a Team Excellence Award for a group who has excelled and displayed cooperation teamwork in support of a common goal or project that has produced exemplary results, as this team certainly has. And today, the ERC would like to recognize the Police Accountability Board Groundwork Team. The members of this team are, if you guys don't mind, when I call your names, could you stand up and, and go over there with your certificates, and we'll pose for a picture? That would be awesome. From Communications and Media Relations, we have Darrell Baxter, John Bennett, Katie Britton, Sarah Eman, Terrell Gross, Erin Lowe, Kevin Smith, and Heather Skyler.
Hi.
You have one major...
It's quiet just up here.
I'm sure everyone, everyone else is just holding down the fort. Thank you for representing your department. In the County Administrator's Office, we have Ruthie Buckler, Rachel Distel, and Ashley Staples-Reed, who are all here. Come on up, come on up. Congratulations. Thank you for being part of the team. From the County Attorney's Office, we have Nicole Harrington and Samantha Jones.
Samantha.
She has the two certificates. She'll hold the place for Samantha. And Technology Services, we have Andrew Miller, Steve Pereira, Catherine Poff, Justin Shutt, John Silcox, Heather Stark, oh, Heath Starkweather, sorry, Jennifer Treadwell, and Shannon Weaver.
Turn it off, you're dallying.
Thank you. You don't have to pose if it's, because I have to explain what you guys are, yeah. So, the Maryland General Assembly decided to dismantle the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights and create a new statutory regime for accountability and administrative charges for law enforcement. And this was not without controversy, Commissioners, as passion and emotions were found on all sides of this issue. This talented team used a collective ability to provide fair and unbiased messaging to obtain public input. Due to their efforts, our community was able to reach a consensus on what Calver County's Accountability Board and their charging committee should look like. Then presented this to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners enacted the balanced provisions, well vetted by our community in a four-month period. For the Accountability Board, an administrative charging committee was first formed February of 2022. A special thanks to their specialty and dedication, this process was completed ahead of schedule, and in such a manner as to respect and welcome the perspectives of all constituents. This team was instrumental in working together to provide high-quality customer service, prepare many draft documents, collaborated, and researched every aspect of possibility. The ERC is delighted that we recognize the importance of creating this board with thoughtfulness, tact, and the desire to improve the process for the greater good. And to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this exceptional team for demonstrating what we all know is that Calver County is the greatest place to live and work. Thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee, and for partnering with us to celebrate this award, and celebrate our truly remarkable workforce. So, thank you. I do think there's a couple of people that would like to say some things. John, Norris?
Commissioners, it's a small group there that got us to the finish line. And I say that tongue-in-cheek, because it took a lot. You know, former Commissioner Hutchins provided us the starting point with the, for the discussion. And when he left, it was President Hance and Vice President Weems who called together the County Administrator, the Deputy Administrator, and initiated community outreach and engagement, and most importantly mandated that we do this in an open and transparent way. And there are many opportunities where you think you're being transparent, but without all these people, it would not have actually been transparent. People were able to see their comments. They were able to see the comments of others. They were able to reply and engage through video, in person, and through email and surveys in a time where we were trying to figure out how to deal with COVID, and all that that brought with us. In February this year, the Board enacted the consensus of the community on the Police Accountability Board that'll make recommendations on how to improve policing in the county. And we were always reminded by the Board that we're dealing with lives and livelihoods. This has to be done right, and we have to consider respectfully everybody's comments. Without this team, that could not have been accomplished. The professionalism of these employees, your support for full transparency, ensured the discussions were meaningful and respectful, and I'm grateful for every sacrifice that everybody made, whether they're here, or they're behind the scenes, or they declined to accept this. I truly appreciate everybody's efforts and sacrifice. Thank you.
Former Commissioner Wilson Perrin is the current chairperson, and would like to say just a couple of words to thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Wilson Perrin. I'm currently, well, I'm here today as the Chair of the Police Accountability Board, and I just want to express my appreciation to this team. Because without the work of this team, interacting with the public, establishing the structure that we needed to establish on time, it would not have been possible for me to start on July 1st as the Chair and to take these committees forward. So I want to express my appreciation for all the work you've done. And it doesn't, as you know, it doesn't end there. We currently meet and make sure that we do continue going forward with the directives from the state, and also to say that the Commissioners, you established the committees, the committee and the Board on time. Calver County is leading the state right now in terms of executing those functions. The PAB has met twice, the ACC has met once. We're fully staffed in terms of members of the ACC, the PAB, and also the Trial Board. So I want to thank you for the work. You've been recognized here for today, but also for the continued support that's needed to make this whole organization, this new organization that's in place a success. Thank you.
For more information about the Police Activity Board, they could go Accountability Board, they could go to our website, correct? CalverCountyMaryland.gov.
Thank you so much. Are you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. So we did want to take this opportunity to thank the staff for all the work they did. As was mentioned, this was something, there wasn't a, there wasn't already a program out there that we could just copy off of. We had to start from the ground up, and trying to make sure that citizens had as much input as possible to, because at the end of the day, they are the ones that have to have confidence in the process. So just want to take this opportunity to thank the staff for all the work they did in setting this up, because we did hear comments around the state. They were all waiting to see what we did, once they heard where we were going. So others were just copying off of us as we went along. So it makes you feel pretty good that at least somebody recognizes you did something right. So we are on time for our first public hearing. Public hearing number one is Department of Economic Development Budget Adjustment 041. Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development, and I have with me today Hillary Daly, Tourism Program Specialist. We're here for a public hearing on Budget Amendment Number 41 to increase the fiscal year 23 adopted Economic Development Grant Budget. There are three public hearings scheduled for today. All hearings were duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is made part of the record of each hearing. Citizens were invited to provide public comment on any or all of the three hearings after each presentation has concluded. Each of the three hearings may have a separate comment period following their brief presentation. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to the attorney to speak. Okay. Budget Adjustment Number 41 to increase the FY 2023 Adopted Economic Development Grant Budget. Background. The Department of Economic Development has offered a tourism marketing grant annually through the Maryland Office of Tourism Development. The department has received this recurring grant for over 20 years. The grant program allows us to leverage budget resources to promote tourism in our target market areas, recruit visitors, and increase spending to our sites, attractions, and tourism business partners in Calver County. The Maryland Tourism Development Board is committed to supporting tourism marketing and the development efforts conducted by local jurisdictions, which in turn provide a return on investment to the state of Maryland. In June 2022, the Maryland Tourism Development Board reviewed the FY 23 Destination Marketing Organization Grant Program as part of the Maryland Office of Tourism Development, the Annual Marketing Development Plan, and the $2.5 million funding pool legislated in the Tourism Promotion Act of 2028. In mid-July 2022, the Office of Governor Larry Hogan approved the allocation of $8 million in rainy day funds provided through the legislation passed by the Maryland General Assembly. The FY 23 allocation formula is unique because of the one-time addition of the $8 million in rainy day funds to the Maryland Office of Tourism Development's budget. Based on the formulaic performance of Calver County, the Maryland Tourism Development Board awarded Calver County a grant in the amount of $193,586. The total grant award of $193,586, of which $37,404 is currently in the FY 23 adopted budget. Budget Amendment 41 will increase the FY 23 adopted budget by $156,172, totaling the full grant award amount of $193,586. The Department of Economic Development requests that the Board of County Commissioners, after each public comment, or after public comment, close the record and sign the attached resolution enacting Budget Amendment Number 41 in the amount of $156,172. The floor has been opened for public comment on this hearing.
There is no one online, but there is someone who signed up.
Thank you very much. Joseph Cormier?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier from Owens, Maryland. I want to take a second and recognize our fellow Americans in Puerto Rico who are struggling from the hurricane right now, and they thrive on tourism too, so anything we can do to help them, I'd appreciate. I just had a question about this particular item, the $193,000 that we're getting from this grant, and I'm all about getting grants and anything from the state we can get. Is this on top of the $500,000 that we got from the hotel tax allocation to fund 33 tourism development incentive funds? So now do we have $600,000 to use for marketing, or are these separate pools of money? And just looking forward how we're going to spend it here in Calver County to increase tourism, because waterways and farmers and everything is what we thrive on. So thank you so much.
Okay.
Hillary?
Good morning. My name is Hillary Daly. I'm the Tourism Specialist for Calver County. It's two pots of money. This, the annual tourism grant associated with this budget adjustment allows us to partner with the State of Maryland Office of Tourism Development on nationwide advertising and marketing opportunities that would otherwise be out of our reach budget-wise. In parallel with this grant, the Maryland Office of Tourism offers a slate of publications that are willing to give discounted rates to the counties that accept this annual marketing grant award. So it is a win-win, especially for our smaller counties like ours, to be able to be highlighted on a national level.
So are there some examples of what you've done in the past?
So, yes, we have partnered with Maryland on AAA World, and Preservation Magazine, and Washington Post. All of these publications are extremely expensive, usually to advertise in, but with this grant and the parallel offers that they allow us to get discounted rates, with this particular money, we can highlight Calver County bigger and wider than we can with our other budget.
And that's out of the $193,000?
Yes, sir.
How about the $500,000?
The $500,000 is, we're going to work with our partners and tourism businesses to figure out where they want to put the money, the target markets, their target markets, figure out where they would like to market with that money. So that's more local and inside Maryland. This is more outside Maryland, national.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? We have no attorney.
Do, I was going to ask if there's...
He's in the audience.
If there's any other comments...
Don't worry, he's not leaving us alone. That's too dangerous.
There's still no one online.
Okay.
Okay.
So, gentlemen?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we close the record and approve and adopt resolution enacting FY 2023 Budget Adjustment Number 041. Second.
I have a motion in a second that we close the record, approve and adopt resolution enacting FY 23 Budget Adjustment 041. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
So our next public hearing is from the Office of the County Attorney.
Mr. President, I will retuse myself.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm Tom McLaren, a regular member of the Ethics Commission. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
And John Norris, County Attorney. Commissioners, we were with you for a work session before we advertised this as a public hearing. You gave us permission, thank you. We are going to go through 15 amendments, all of which are mandated except for three. Three are the recommendation of the Ethics Commission. At the end, we're going to ask you to, if it's appropriate based on the record, close the record, adopt and enact the recommended amendments. We do have the state's approval. So that's new. Background. The principal goal of the Calver County Ethics Code is to further the public's trust in the, those who govern. The local ethics rule define the minimum obligations government officials and employees have toward the public. The continuous development and refinement of these minimum standards ensure continuity of trust that adapts to changing environments. So that's why there are changes. This is a delegated program. The State Ethics Commission has given the county the authority to have a local ethics ordinance. As I mentioned, there are 13 mandated, and, I'm sorry, 12 mandated and three recommended amendments. Amendment number one is an optional amendment. It amends the definition of interest in Section 41-2 to also exclude exchange-traded funds and mutual funds. Amendment number two is mandatory. It adds a definition of quasi-governmental entity as an entity that's created by state statute that performs a public function and is supported in whole or part by the state but managed privately. Mandatory amendment is related to a later amendment to preclude the disclosure of the amount of consideration received from the University of Maryland Medical System, or state or local governmental entities, and quasi-governmental entities. Amendment number three provides a new subpart four, it's Section 41-13A of the Ethics Code. It's a mandatory amendment that creates a reverse post-employment restriction of one year for lobbyists who become officials or employees. It does not apply to uncompensated or minimally compensated less than $12,000 board or commission members or elected officials. Mandatory amendment number four adds a new subpart E at 41-14A3 to prohibit the knowing acceptance of a gift from associations engaged in representing counties or municipal corporations. So it's specifically designating Mako and MML as organizations whose gifts must be projected if you knowingly are receiving it from them. Amendment number five, mandatory amendment to repeal and re-adopt 41-13F of the code that adds former officials and employees to the group that generally is precluded from disclosing confidential information acquired during your employment or position with the government for the gain of another, or yourself. Amendment number six is a mandatory amendment to add a new subpart J to 41-13 of the code prohibiting retaliation against individuals for reporting or participating in an investigation of a potential violation of the Ethics Code. Number seven is a mandatory amendment to add a new subpart D to 41-15A1 of the code. It requires disclosure of trade names and doing business as names where a business name is required to be disclosed. That would be on your financial disclosure statements, or lobbyist statements. Mandatory number eight is an amendment to repeal and re-adopt 41-15A2D of the code, changes the length of time a candidate has to cure an overdue financial disclosure from 20 days to eight after written notice of failure to file is provided by the county clerk or the Board of Elections Supervisor. Mandatory amendment number nine is the amendment to repeal and re-adopt 41-15A3D1 of the code with amendments extending the gift reporting requirement to include those in excess of $20 in value, or a series of gifts with a cumulative value of $100 from an association or entity acting on behalf of an association... Gifts from Mako in excess of twenty dollars or cumulatively in excess of one hundred dollars must be reported, though preferably they'd be rejected.
So if I go to Mako Legislative Committee meeting, they serve me lunch, do I have to report the value of the lunch?
If it's over twenty dollars or it happens more than five times, so that it's cumulatively over a hundred, I would say yes, but that's why the Ethics Commission's here. They buy their Ethics Code, they're the only ones who can provide ethics opinions.
Over what period also?
In a year?
It's a calendar year.
Five years in a calendar, five times in a calendar year.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to express any opinions right here, or-
No, I do not. The Ethics Commission does meet monthly and then-
Yeah, we just wait for the documents to come in and the people that have issues to raise them. So we're more of a reactive board than we are proactive. We don't seek, we're not detectives looking for trouble. We just take them as they come.
And we'll, of course, investigate if there is an allegation of-
If there is an allegation that stands, then we decide that we're going to move on it, yes.
Yes. But the Ethics Commission stands ready to answer questions on specific circumstances where they can get all the details and all the facts. So many of these are nuanced discussions that depend on whether you turned right or left and accepted it in your right hand or left hand.
Well, it does get gray, and sometimes, like, I try not to offend people, because, you know, if I'm out, like, in just a, just a private setting, and they're like, hey, I'll, you know, I'll buy the meal or whatever, I'm like, no. Just so it doesn't get misconstrued. I mean, even if I'm with my brother, I don't, and just because it's just, it just leaves too much up for interpretation, you know, and this is my brother, you know, and he's like, hey, you bought last time, I'll, you know, I just, um, because it does get too gray. It is, it is a very gray document sometimes, so I just, um, it's, you know, it's just easier for me to buy my sandwich.
And you never know who's watching.
Well, it's true, and it gets misconstrued. I can remember, I kid you not, when Dominion was building the facility, and they were tearing the road up on a daily basis. I mean, there was just debris and stuff, or not, you know, from the thing, and they're cleaning it, but the cars were getting dirty in the process. They were giving out tokens to go to the car wash. I wouldn't even take those, because I just didn't want the drama, you know, I'm like, now just go wash my own car. But they were like, hey, you know, we've dirtied the car, and here's the tokens, just, just, just two same words, squeeze, you know, I just, uh, be left with it.
So number ten is a mandatory amendment that requires individuals to disclose any financial or contractual relationship with the Maryland Medical System, a governmental entity that, of the state or a local government, or a quasi-governmental entity. This again is a mandatory amendment. Also requires the, if the filer's spouse is a lobbyist regulated by the county to disclose that the entity has engaged the spouse for lobbying purposes. Number eleven is also a mandatory amendment. It requires the county to repeal and re-adopt forty-one dash fifteen A four B with amendments redefining the attributable interest in a business entity that must be disclosed, and we talked about this during the work session. It is intended to capture where you have a tree of businesses where one entity is owned by another entity that's owned by another entity, and so, a business entity in which the individual held ten percent or greater interest, a business entity described above the, in which the business entity held twenty-five percent or greater interest, and then goes all the way up to fifty percent, and then a business entity in which the individual directly or indirectly threw an interest in one or a combination of other businesses holds a ten percent or greater interest. So it's intended to capture the dilution of interests through multiple level business ownerships, if that makes sense. Twelve is also a mandatory amendment, adds new subpart five and six to forty-one dash fifteen G of the code, precluding public access to information related to the amount of consideration or the compensation that's paid from the University of Maryland Medical System, a governmental entity of the state, or a quasi-governmental entity of the state. For statements filed after January one, twenty nineteen, it precludes public access to an individual's home address as well. Number thirteen is an optional amendment that's been recommended by the Calvert County Ethics Commission to repeal and re-adopt section forty-one dash sixteen B one, requiring lobbyists who serve on county boards and commissions and are disqualified from participating in a specific matter to file a statement of recusal. So recusal forms are optional at this point. This would make that mandatory for those that are lobbyists on a county board or committee. Number fourteen is an optional amendment, also recommended for approval by the Calvert County Ethics Commission, to begin to plan for the public to have internet access to financial disclosure statements submitted by local elected officials, candidates for office, and head of principal departments. So it does not require that the county have tomorrow, or when this is made effective, internet access, but it does require us to start planning for internet access and how we ensure that the individuals whose information is being disclosed is, is notified, if they ask to be notified, and how do we set up a structure for the public to access those? So unless there are any questions or comments, I know we have one individual who has signed up to speak.
Questions?
Yes.
So, organizations have requirements to file as lobbyists, correct? Based on their activities? So with the Ethics Commission, if they see what they perceive as a violation, I think you said earlier, you don't go after people, somebody would have to file?
Right, we don't, we don't, we're not a proactive board or a commission. We wait for someone to file a complaint.
So if someone thought there was an organization operating should be filed as a lobbyist, and they weren't, they'd have to file a complaint before any action would be taken?
Well, we would review it as a board, as, you know, as a commission, and decide, um, where we're going to go with it.
And amendment number eight, seems like this is a mandatory amendment, but just seems like an election, an election board issue instead of an Ethics Commission issue, just to me.
Certainly, you have many different ways to skin that cat, but they did make this amendment in the State Ethics Code and required the counties to adopt it as well.
And the one amendment, I've lost my place now, talks about hiring spouses?
Mm-hmm.
As lobbyists? Or there are other situations where you hire a spouse that would be unethical? Some examples?
There are nepotism provisions in today's Ethics Code that would prevent supervision or being in the, in the chain of command of relatives. Other than that, I'm not sure that there are provisions related to hiring spouses.
It's disclosed, I know that, I don't, we've not had to hear or review any to date.
It is part of the disclosure form.
It is.
I'm just wondering, where's the line where I could hire my spouse or a sibling that wasn't a violation?
So under the nepotism provisions, you could not, but your, one of your other departments could. If, because the Board of County Commissioners hires the department heads directly, that authority then goes down to the county administrator who hires below that, the department heads who hire below that.
If a director hired my spouse or sibling, would that be considered a violation, do you believe? I'm just thinking through the process to figure out where the lines are.
I, that, that's, we'd have to bring that before the art commission, where I really have not that much experience with that to-
For me-
I would say-
I think it's not right.
Probably, probably not, you know, I think this refers more, more to the, an employee have hiring, so I need a direct report to them.
Right.
As opposed to someone that, that level that, four or five levels down.
Right.
I don't see that as a violation.
Because we have twelve hundred employees-
Surely, yeah.
And I don't hire, only hire him.
And he wants to rid me.
But, there's a, I'm just trying to figure out how far, you know, if there's an example of how far down the chain, like you say, how many levels are there between me and them?
So with the nepotism provisions, there is no family member allowed in your direct chain of command. Beyond that, I don't recall any opinions from the Ethics Commission, and I certainly don't know all of them, but I, I don't recall any opinions from the Ethics Commission that dealt with that kind of point.
So in our process, technically, we only direct the county administrator, right?
You're also signatory to the department head contracts.
Okay, so it would go down to directors? Okay.
Commissioners, if I may, Mark Willis County Administrator, this is actually a topic that we're addressing right now with HR, Human Resources Director, because, you know, when we look at it, we're a small county, we can say everybody knows everybody, we have some very talented citizens out there that would like to work for the county, and a lot of times it's in the same line of work, which you might see is normal, whether it's technology services or emergency management, for example, but they kind of grew up in the system, and they follow that same track. We're having a difficulty, what we would see as hiring certainly one of the most qualified individuals across the spectrum, because there's a family member in the chain of command. We're going to be taking that to the Ethics Commission in the near future, just to kind of get some ideas on which direction we can go. I know it's legally binding as well, but we're looking at it.
I can't think of any examples, or, you know, off the top of my head, I'm just speaking while I'm thinking, which is always dangerous, but-
Well, it, it's tough, because it's still a small county. And just like the director just said, you know, there's, there's a lot of talented people. I mean, let's say we were doing electric work or something, and you went with your mom or dad every day on the job to watch that, you know, and all of a sudden they're doing that same job for the county, you know, it's just something that you just know so well, and there could be a very qualified person out there, very well-deserving person, and then we're actually doing the county an injustice by not having them onboard, so, and it's a fine line, you know, but I think, you know, with the application process that we've put in, we've taken a lot of steps to try to ensure that we're just getting the best qualified people and not just, you know, any type of nepotism or anything at all like that, so, but that's why you guys are very important.
And so that same thought process, does that follow down through? So a deputy director couldn't hire us?
Yes.
Same requirements?
Yes, the nepotism provisions apply to every county.
Right, further down the chain.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Even all the way down to the county attorney.
Even too.
All the way down.
All the way down.
All the way down.
At the bottom of the barrel, it actually applies.
The attorneys, yeah. Um, to not talk about nepotism, I mean, move off nepotism, I, I heard you say something earlier that you guys are not an investigatory, you guys don't go out and proactively look for stuff to investigate.
We're not detectives.
You're not detectives and whatnot, but do you have to have an actual physical complaint filed from someone, or if you see something, being on the committee, that's so, in your opinion, so blatant and obvious, can you guys at that point say, hey, we need to talk about this? Although we haven't had a complaint from the citizenry yet, or from somebody yet, we need to talk about topic A. Is, do you guys do that at all?
In my experience, we have not done that.
Okay.
Responded to a situation, as long as I've been there. And yes, you, you need to file a complaint. If, if somebody has a conflict of interest concern, they contact us. Typically, what we do is we send them information, how to fill the form out, where the form lives, and articulate exactly what their complaint is or their concern is, and then we take that up as a, as a commission.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And if we need legal advice, we-
Right.
We go to John.
Actually, I can say, while I was in St. Mary's, Jack Upton was counsel to the St. Mary's Ethics Commission, and I was counsel to the Calvert County Ethics Commission. I don't recall either one of them ever undertaking an investigation on their own initiative. Once there is a complaint that they feel warrants an investigation, they do doggedly investigate.
Gotcha.
Amendment number one?
Yes, sir.
What, what is the definition of a close relationship? If I play golf with somebody twice a year, is that a close relationship? And I don't need, you know-
That's a good question.
Just ballpark?
I believe it is defined in the actual ordinance itself. If it please the board, I can pull my laptop while we allow the public comment.
That's okay, that, it's not, it's not going to sway my decision one way or the other, I just thought while I had you here, and someone from the Ethics Commission, because it's, sounds vague, but if there's a definition in there that sort of lays some boundaries?
So this is a somewhat ambiguous, brief statement of what the fuller text is. I believe it is somebody who is an immediate family member, and we were just trying to shorten it for the purposes of, but I believe it's related to immediate family member.
Like I said, it's not relative, it's just, came in my head while we hit both here. Any other questions?
So we do have one speaker who's signed up, Mr. Cormier. If you please come to the microphone, identify yourself in whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier from Owings, Maryland. I do want to thank the Ethics Commission, I did reach out to them and see if I needed to register as lobbyist, since I'm up here running my mouth all the time. They didn't say that I needed to at this time. I just had a question about this Ethics Code for recusals. When someone feels like they need, whether a commissioner or a committee member, and they feel they need to recuse themselves, I think that they should have to declare it. I know Mr. McConkey has left the room for this discussion last week, Mr. Hart left during the zoning for the cigar lounge. If you're going to leave the room for a recusal, I think you should have to declare it and not just leave like you're going to the bathroom or getting a Diet Coke. If you think that you're going to have a conflict, you should, you shouldn't have to go in the whole spiel and say, I am recusing myself for this topic, and just make that clear to the public, because it wasn't clear in the recording last week what was going on. Especially for those with, you know, lame duck terms right now who are about to be back into the private sector. If you're voting on things that are changing in your district, if you've got a cigar lounge in the plan, you should have to announce that type of thing. So I appreciate all the hard work of the Ethics Commission. Again, I'm, I imagine that's an all-volunteer board who, you know, puts their time and effort into that, and it helps the county greatly, so thank you so much.
That is the only person who's signed up to speak, and there's still no one online. So it's a duly-advertised public hearing, the board's in a position now, if you wish to, close the record and adopt the amendments to chapter forty-one, which will become effective upon recordation, because the state has approved them.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Owens?
A move that we close the record and approve and adopt the ordinance enacting amendment to chapter forty-one of the Calvert County Code.
Second? Have a motion in a second that we close the record and approve and adopt the ordinance enacting amendment to chapter forty-one of the Calvert County Code. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any vacancies currently on the Ethics Commission? I know we've had some issues over the time.
Not now, uh, next month.
Next month, we're going to have a vacancy?
Yeah.
So this is my time to plug any of you out there that, as was mentioned by the commenter, ethics is very important, and we certainly want to make sure that we have qualified people and have those vacancies filled as soon as possible.
Yeah, we have one, one person whose term is up next month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Department planning and zoning, and for this issue, I have to recuse myself, so Mr. Vice President, you're in charge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. So we're here today for a public hearing on budget adjustment number oh-five-nine for funding of land preservation, and with me today is Jen David. She is our rural planner, and she is going to read the memo.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For background on this memo, the Board of County Commissioners established the purchase and retirement fund in nineteen ninety-two to purchase, retire, and permanently remove transferable development rights from the development rights market, thereby protecting additional farm land acres from development. The Board of County Commissioners also in twenty-twenty-one directed staff to establish a TDR bank pilot program that, moving forward, will be called the TDR Reserve. This is a county-managed program that will facilitate TDR sales between farmers and developers and act as a revolving fund. Discussion. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, the approved budget for par was one million, five hundred- In fiscal year 2022, the approved budget for PAR was $1,530,000, and the approved budget for the TDR Reserve was $921,675. At the end of fiscal 20, fiscal year 2022, there was a total expenditure for PAR of $657,000, leaving a fund balance of $873,000, of which $471,064 was included in the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. Initial expenditures did not occur for the TDR Reserve pilot program until fiscal year 23, and so there is a fund balance of $921,675. Staff is requesting a budget adjustment to bring the fund balances forward of $1,323,611, and realign the budget of $1,431,450, in order to utilize these two programs for the fiscal year 2023, for a total budget adjustment of $2,755,061. In addition to the other revenues budgeted for Fund 28 land preservation, the total adjusted approved budget for fiscal year 2023 would total $2,804,675,000, including this budget adjustment. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact. Conclusion and recommendation, staff recommends, following any public comment, the board close the record and approve budget adjustment number 59, and assign the attached resolution.
We do have one speaker signed up to speak, Joseph Cormier.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Joseph Cormier from Owings, Maryland. I, I still struggle with this whole TDR situation, and now we've got the, the purchase and remove, which is just increasing the scarcity of that finite resource, because there's only so much land that's eligible for those TDR situations, the cost of buying those TDRs is just passed on to the, the home builder and the, or the future renter, it's not doing much for that. I know we have to balance, you know, protecting our waterways and preserving our open land, but to say that there's no fiscal impact in this, I don't think is true, because we've got millions of dollars sitting in this bank, not doing anything for the county right now, are we investing that while it's sitting in the bank, or is it just sitting in a line item somewhere? We're going to have $2.7 million at $5,000 a TDR, which is what they want to raise it to later in today, that's going to preserve another 550 acres. What is the end goal? How many acres are we trying to preserve, and what's left? And is there a map that we can see what TDRs have already been removed from the system, and where that land is? I just, I want to know, is the price going to continue as that supply continues to shrink? Are we going to be paying 9,000, 10,000, 15,000 per TDR to keep building? It continues to fall under the septic and the aquifer situation, we're going to hear about Huntington Elementary School, whose septic system is failing right now, and if they have to go to a holding tank system, I don't know how we're going to pay for that. So I just, this TDR thing is very complicated, and I'm trying to understand it all, and I don't know if that's money well-spent, or if we can put it toward better uses for citizens who are struggling today, or other resources for mental health, or, you know, community uses like the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Center, instead of just paying farmers and developers to move money around. Thank you so much.
There is no one online.
So, I'd like to entertain... So, obviously, you know, we put this together, uh, two years ago, I think, we kind of put that board back together, the...
The TDR, yeah.
Yeah.
Land Preservation Group, yes.
How, are we, are we getting reports back? How's that going?
It's, it's going well, so Jen actually has the numbers for the PAR program in the past year, and also the pilot program for the TDR Reserve Bank.
Someone's been kind enough to put it on screen, if we could move to the third slide, please. There we are, thank you. So, what you may be referring to, sir, is, my understanding is that a couple of years ago, the TDR Reserve Program was initiated, so let's be clear, so there's the PAR program, which is the purchase and retire program, that's been in place for many, many years.
Right.
And then the second part, the new part, is called the TDR Reserve Program. The TDR Reserve Program has come out, from my understanding, that it's often challenging for developers and the farming community, those, those individuals that have TDRs, to hook up. There's, there's not...
We have to get it all certified and all said, I mean, it's a process, it's not, right, so it's much easier to have the, us kind of mitigate that.
Right, right, and especially for smaller individuals, or, you know, individuals rather than companies, or, or folks that are well-versed, it can be challenging to find the TDRs that they need for development, or even for a single home. So not only are, are companies impacted, but also individuals in the county, ordinary citizens are also impacted in different ways, and it does get complicated.
But does it seem like it's kind of going in the right direction?
It is going in the right direction. So, as we discussed last year, the purchase price for both programs was $4,500, and then we did not have any sales, any transactions for the TDR Reserve Program go through or become finalized prior to the beginning of this fiscal year in July 1. So we got our very first three transactions completed, this coming one, and it's going well. And as we've mentioned before, we have, we have 10 in the bank currently, and we will have 22 coming up shortly, as soon as the paperwork is completed, so that would be a, a total of 32 TDRs, and we're hoping that that program expands, and we have interested parties, and it sounds like it will be really good, and there are, there is a segment of that population who I think is really going to find it advantageous to have a, a place where they can go when the TDRs are needed and they can't find it elsewhere.
Well, the program's essential for rural character.
It is.
And it's part of the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely, I mean, it's essential, so, so, and, and going forward, you know, looking past today, obviously, I mean, we, we've seen, we've seen when growth goes unchecked, all the unattended consequences, I mean, Commissioner Williams, what was it, back in the 90s, it was a school every year, every two years?
Every year.
Every year.
I mean, that's unsustainable, you know, and we, and, and we have the luxury of being able to see the past and that data, so my question is, I, I see the $5,000, are we going to get, are we going to get what we're looking for with $5,000?
We're going to talk about that later. So right now, we need the budget adjustment, so that we have the money in the correct account, so that we can continue the programs.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of the game?
With us having a goal of 40,000 preserved acres across the county, I like the fact that we have that definition and that, that goal, and I believe we're well over 30,000 at this point.
That's correct.
So we can move to that other discussion later. If it pleases the rest of the Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we close the record and approve and adopt a resolution enacting FY 2023 budget adjustment number 059.
Second? We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mary Belph, how often in the past has the county revisited the change of price in TDRs?
We do it yearly, with the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board.
And what month is that, like, is it every July, is it August?
It depends on, because they're a layboard, and they only meet when they have items to talk about, so we, we try to do it in, I would say, July to September timeframe.
Because it seems like we've revisited this like three times in the past year, which is way out of character.
I do believe we only changed the price once, and that was when we were going through the whole reevaluating the TDR program with the committee.
Well, why aren't we waiting to do this next year with the TDR committee? Why are we bringing this up again now?
Because we, we try to do it within the fiscal year, with the, at least the PAR program, the bank, the reserve, it's open all the time, but to spend the money within the fiscal year is why we bring it to you, like, in the fall, we'll open the program, and then we actually physically have to close it to see how much money we've spent during that fiscal year.
I guess what concerns me is we've, they've already update, up the amount of TDRs you need per bedroom type of thing, and now the price continues to keep going up, what is the percentage of people that own TDRs as to the percentage of the population of Calver County? I kind of feel like, you know, all the taxpayers are paying for this program, but the majority of the county isn't benefiting from it, kind of what Joseph Cormier said, you know, it's, there's other programs that we need money in, and there's a small percentage of people that are benefiting from this program where the other citizens aren't.
So the money comes from various places, it's not all coming out of the, the budget for the Commissioners, so we have recording fees that get, so, you know, there's a percentage, there's a, a record, an ordinance recorded for how much that, that recording, recording fee is going to go into this pot of money, we get money from other state agencies, and there's quite a bit of this money that can't be spent for anything else, it's not like we can take this money out of this account.
So it's not all taxpayer money?
No.
What percentage of taxpayer money would you say it is?
I believe the Commissioners have committed to a million dollars a year to adding to the program.
And I, I personally believe that all the citizens of the county benefit from this, not, one particular farmer or landowner may gain a financial benefit by selling those developmental rights, however, every time I drive up and down Route 4 in less traffic, and don't have to build new schools, and don't have to build and add additional public services, I think that we all, as a county, benefit, and I believe that this is a core, core principle to stabilizing the population growth, or, or slowing it to some degree, to where we don't have to sit there and expand Route 4 to a, from an eight-lane highway to a 14-lane highway going through Prince Frederick. So I, I, respectfully, I just, I look at it as a, this is a benefit to everybody in the county, not just the landowners, or developers, or whoever.
Well, to that, to that point, when you look at when the TDR program was put in, why was it put in? And it was because of those things right there, uncontrolled growth? I mean, we are seeing it now, like I just alluded to earlier, you know, as far as septics failing, and things of that nature, I don't think there's a person driving up and down the road of Route 4, going back and forth to work, loves the traffic situation the way it is today, much less how it could be in the future. And, you know, I remember my father, when I was a kid, you know, we would drive down Roseby Hall Road and go around, and he would just love the trees, and the change of the colors, and we would go down Route 4. What's that price? What's that cost? You know, if you look at Maryland as a whole, and, I'm correcting, 24 jurisdictions, 22 jurisdictions, so, so, I'm sorry, put one like Calver County, low crime, schools, look at that picture, there's always some reason to destroy it, you know, what's the price to keep it, the gorgeous place? We all came here for that reason, or you were born here, and you appreciated it and you stayed, but if you're here, it's because you like it a certain way, and there seems to be this rush to destroy it, and, you know, there's, there was a movie, it was this guy trying to take over a company, and he says, well, why are you trying to destroy it? He goes, because I can destroy it. And sometimes the bigger restraint is not to, to appreciate the value and the beauty of it, it's already, you know, as just in time, you know, the population just grows on its own, but to rush it, to destroy it, I mean, I, I tell you, this program to me is extremely vital, to try to maintain that for the next generation, and the next generation, because once you lose it, you don't get it back.
And the money that we spend on this, frankly, is pennies in comparison to the monies that would have to be spent on the massive...
Just one school.
On the massive infrastructure, whether, I mean, a sewer pipeline, that's $100 million, a, you know, each school is 20, 30 million, 40 million.
And for what? What do you gain? I mean, we're going to have, I was laughing, Sacheeta's here, Sacheeta, how many of those HVAC conversations do we have every year? You know?
At least five.
Right, right, so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, and that's just, you'll learn over time, and, so, Commissioner Clark said to me one time, he said, you know, he said, understand, you know, why people are here, you know, and appreciate it.
The program is vital, the problem I see is the continued rising of the cost and the requirement of more, I'm not sure that the program's going to work as good, I don't see people being able to pick up that extra expense.
So the developers get to buy the TDRs on the free market, so they don't have to pay 5,000 TDRs, they approach an owner of TDRs and make an offer, so if they're offering to buy 100 TDRs, maybe they're only paying $3,000, that, we have no control over that, we only have control over what we're purchasing and retiring under the PAR, and with the Reserve Program, we're actually going to get that money back, because we're going to sell those to the developers for what we paid for them.
And there's, there's a cost in there that people don't see, when these developments happen, they don't just fill out a building permit, and that's it. Staff is brought in multiple times, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, doesn't include what the school system has to put in for bus routes and everything else, the, the price is so much more than just, you know, going back to, what do you gain? What does the taxpayer gain from that? It's, it, it, and it's extremely complex, it really is, and it's something, I've been here almost eight years, and I probably, I mean, only know 15% of what I need to know on this, I mean, it's just that complex, because it's, it's dominoes, you touch this, and all the way over there, you're, you're affecting something else, and you, we, you've been in that position how long?
Almost three years.
And how long have you been in, planning and zoning?
15.
Have you ever seen a project just go?
Believe it or not, yes, they do, it's, you only hear about the bad ones.
But, but with a large building project, it, it does take back and forth.
Takes a long time, sure, sure.
And, and that has cost, and that has taxpayer cost.
It does.
Okay, any further comment? I just want to say that for the public, and Mr. Cormier, the gentleman behind you, Ron Marney, is our resident expert, so if you can, sir, please link with him on this specific topic, Director, we can characterize this also as being a, a, a situation where an ad hoc committee was formed with the agricultural, as well as the business community?
Correct.
And came up with many of these recommendations, inclusive of, but not limited to, the TDR Bank itself.
Yes.
So, with that said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? We have 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is consent, there's one item under consent, Department of Public Works Wholesale Whistler Market Waterman's Wharf Oversight Committee, is there any objection to the one item under consent? Hearing no objection, that item will be adopted as presented. Next, we move on to new business, item number one, Department of Finance and Budget, Board of Education, Huntington Elementary Budget Adjustment. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst, and with me today is...
Sacheeta Warner, Director of School Construction, Calver County Public Schools, good morning.
Good morning. We're not talking HVAC today.
No HVAC today.
Good, I thought that was for the spring.
Yes, that's right. We'll do that in early winter.
Okay.
When we're all cold. Background, Board of Education, or the BOE, has had some unforeseen failures at Huntington Elementary School. The existing septic fields that serve the school have failed and require replacement. The total cost for the emergency project is projected to be $300,000. The Board of Education has requested the county contribution of $75,000 for the project. After review of the BOE's Capital Improvement Projects, or CIP, we were able to locate some remaining funding from four of the BOE's projects. Discussion. The Department of Finance and Budget and the BOE have identified funding in four CIP projects that can be utilized for the emergency project at Huntington Elementary School. The four projects identified for the budget adjustment totaled $75,000. The projects identified are either completed, or the costs were under the budget at the time of the project. Fiscal impact. The projects that will be impacted are... The projects identified are either completed or the costs were under the budget at the time of the project. Fiscal impact. The projects that will be impacted are Appeal Elementary, the chiller replacement and design for thirty thousand, Southern Middle School Equipment and Mechanical System, thirty-one thousand, eight eighty-seven and forty-six cents, St. Leonard Elementary School Chiller Replacement, three thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, and the Calvert Country School Renovations, nine thousand, five sixty-nine, fifteen. These projects total funding seventy-five thousand to be transferred to the Huntington Elementary School. The remaining funds in these projects represent projects that are either completed or the costs were under the budget at the time of the project. Conclusion Recommendation. Finance and Budget recommends that the board approve budget adjustment zero, one, two, CIP for seventy-five thousand to the Huntington Elementary School CIP Construction Project.
Anything to add?
Uh, yes. Uh, we are working with, um, the Department of Health to, uh, begin the perk testing. Uh, I have been in conversations with the state to request funding towards the emergency project. Um, we're very hopeful. We've gathered, uh, um, information that the state required, uh, in terms of invoices. Uh, because what is happening at this point is the, we had an inkling that the septic fields were starting to experience failure. So maintenance had, um, contacted me regarding, uh, potential, um, uh, evidence that showed that the fields were not taking in the water as they should. And so we had actually began a concept study, um, in the spring to be able to place the project in the CIP, uh, in a future year. But over the summer, we were doing a, um, parking lot improvement project at Huntington Elementary. And when we began excavation for the biopond, which is required for the stormwater management, we actually unearthed these septic fields. They were completely in the wrong place from where the Asbills showed them to be. And then when we excavated further, we found that they had in fact failed. So we stopped the work there and obviously it became a much more of a critical matter. So that is why we're here today. We are, at this point, pumping weekly the septic tank and the distribution tank, which is costing us between seven hundred, a hundred and fifty and a thousand dollars a week. So it's certainly from the operational side, we're really bleeding money at this point. So, uh, the sooner we can fast track the design and replacement of these fields, uh, I think obviously everybody will be better off. So I think that's about everything that I, I can add that would be helpful to you.
Do we have an estimate in time? How long, how fast can you get it done?
I don't know. I believe that a lot of that will be.
As winter is approaching?
Well, in terms of design, I don't think that that will be the issue. I think it will be the review period and the permitting period. Um, so we're really working pretty diligently with, uh, county staff. We had a meeting last week with, uh, Public Works to let them know what was happening and just to have a conversation, uh, regarding the biopond and whether that needed to be moved with the current project that we're under construction on. So they've been very helpful conversations. Uh, I wish I could tell you, I don't know, because that is a piece that I can't control in terms of the review process and the permitting process. But we're certainly going to do everything that we can very quickly. And I believe that the county staff has been really good with working with us. So I'm sure everybody understands that for the good of the students and the staff, we need to be able to get these done as quickly as possible. Right.
I'm glad to see that the money is there and you guys found the money elsewhere in the budgets, which brings me a question. How often do you find the extra monies like this on projects already completed or came in under budget? And what normally happens with that if there's not an emergency situation like this that it can be immediately rerouted to?
We have in the past. I've worked with Veronica to be able to find, um, change under the cushion, so to speak, in order to bridge the gap on other projects. It is rare to be able to find a lot of money. Um, I do try to, and, and especially, I, I'm sure you're aware, with prices where they are, we're, we usually don't have enough money and we're de-scoping projects. In fact, we just de-scoped one that came in one point six million dollars over budget. So we had to really revamp and re, uh, rebid that out very, very quickly. Uh, so it does happen sometimes, um, but I think you will find that when you go through most of our, uh, project, um, accounts, a lot of them will have a little bit of money left over like this, which we will then go through and, and try to kind of combine towards something else. So we, we try to do our due diligence to really just make sure that there isn't money. That's just a lot of money that's sitting out there.
I was glad to see you didn't have to, you know, impede another project, because that was the first thing I was, I was like, oh, what's this going to pull from? Because like you said, that's normally the case. So that was refreshing to see that. So, um, no, I think, um.
It's, it's great that you had it, because a lot of counties, when they get close to the fiscal year, they, some other counties, they either use it or lose it. So they just start getting stuff done to use up the money. So it's good that you guys have extra money on some of these projects to, in case of emergency like this.
Absolutely. Capital Projects does roll, so they do go year to year, which is good. Um, in this case, I really did think when we approached this, looking for the seventy-five thousand, that we were going to, she was going to have to decrease a project or switch something out. It was, um, great that we could find this money. We had to use four different projects in order to get up there. No, they don't typically have a lot of money left over. We do re, they do not encumber funds through us. They encumber it on their books. So I send a report quarterly to their financial person. It was ED. I don't know who's going to take that position. And they check it against their projects to see what they have. In most cases, if they, if it's a significant amount of money that's left over, if it's, um, from like the general fund or excise tax, then we put that money back into those buckets. If it's general fund, I mean, if it's obligation bonds and the bonds have been sold, then sometimes there's been chance we would come in front of you and ask to reutilize those bonds for a different project to help offset costs that she may need in the future if something's come in over budget. Does that help?
I see you mentioned Calvert, uh, Countries. Is that all completely done now?
So that was the HVAC project. Excuse me, yes, that has been done for several years.
Okay, so it's all finally that hallway and all that stuff, everything's all good?
So really, the project essentially touched the HVAC system. Uh, I think Calvert Country School as a building certainly could use some TLC.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. But that part was such a stickler for so long that, yeah, yeah, I know.
Yes.
Yeah, but at least comfort level is there.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, good.
Questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve budget adjustment BA number zero, one, two, CIP to transfer seventy-five thousand from four other CIP projects to the Huntington Elementary School CIP Construction Budget.
Second.
A motion, a second, that we approve budget adjustment BA zero, one, two, CIP to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from four other CIP projects to the Huntington Elementary School CIP Construction Project. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Sacheeta, while you're here, Beach Elementary.
Yes.
Update?
It's going really well. You know, we have a live cam, so you can actually watch it, uh, just at a click of a button. If you actually go to the Huntington Elementary website, uh, we have it on our construction department website as well. But if you go to the actual, the school's website, you'll be able to see a live cam. It's going really well. Um, we're up to the second story at this point, so construction is on schedule. The, um, staff, we have the move of the staff from the old building to the new building scheduled for next summer. So in about a year, uh, the construction will be done with the new building. Students and staff will move in. So students will actually get to start fall of twenty twenty-three, uh, in the new Beach Elementary School. And then we'll proceed with demoing of the, uh, existing building and the fields, et cetera, so.
When was that in twenty-three? I'm sorry.
Uh, well, the new building will be done in summer of twenty twenty-three. So fall of twenty twenty-three, students will be able to start their school year in the new building. And the entire project as a whole will be completed at the end of the year.
Do you go to the Beach Elementary website or the Huntington, you said?
Did I say Huntington?
Yeah, you said Huntington.
No, I'm sorry. I.
We don't want to watch that project.
No. I promise I will not have a webcam, uh, up for that, no.
So you go to Beach Elementary?
I think my, my, my mind is, my mind is on, on Huntington. No, you go to the Beach Elementary website. They do have a link to the video.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Just keeping you on your toes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ladies, have a good day.
Thanks.
You too.
Next item on our new business, Department of Planning, Zoning, Purchase and Retirement Funds. And, uh, so ladies and gentlemen, most of you know I farm. And because I farm, I own land. So you notice I recuse myself whenever we talk about TDRs because I do own some TDRs in partnership with family members. And I have no intention of ever selling any as long as I'm alive. But, uh, to avoid any perception of conflict, I'm going to always recuse myself when we talk about the TDR program. So in the nature of that, I'm going to leave the room and Vice President Weems is going to take over.
I'm going to recuse myself too, because I own a farm also.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. And, and Ms. Jennifer?
Yes, Mr. Weems.
Didn't mean to monopolize him as being an expert in the TDR program, madam. You are a font of information as well, so.
I, I am, I am getting there. Thank you. I see things from a different perspective, so maybe I can bring some new perspective along.
There you go. So, so you could have a co-meeting with the two of you.
That's right.
Yes.
No offense taken. Thank you very much, remaining commissioners, for having us back.
And, and who are, who do we have here on this panel this morning?
Yes, this is, uh, Mr. Ron Marney. He is our environmental planning regulator and has, uh, a vast experience, uh, in the TDR program. And you know Mary Beth Cook, the director of our department, which we're glad to have with us. And again, I'm Jennifer David.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Go ahead. This section of the meeting is to, uh, the subject of our memo is the Purchase and Retirement, uh, also known as PAR Fund and the TDR Reserve for, uh, the TDR Reserve Program for Fiscal Year 2023. So the prior presentation was regarding the budget adjustment that affects both of these programs. Um, but this is specifically for the opening of these programs. The background. The background is that the Board of County Commissioners established the Purchase and Retirement PAR Fund in nineteen ninety-two to purchase, retire, and permanently remove transferable development rights from the, from the development rights market, thereby protecting additional farmland acres from development. The Board of County Commissioners also in twenty twenty-one directed staff to establish a TDR Bank Pilot Program that moving forward will be called the TDR Reserve. This is a county-managed program that will facilitate TDR sales between farmers and developers and act as a revolving fund. There is one million, eight hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars in the budget available for, for PAR fund purchases and nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars available for the TDR Reserve for Fiscal Year 2023. The PAR funding includes a small portion of the agricultural transfer taxes, which are funds dedicated for agricultural preservation totaling approximately ten thousand dollars. The remaining PAR funds come from prior year land preservation balances of approximately eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and contributions from the county's general fund of nine hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Discussion. The Agricultural Preservation Board, APAB, recommends a purchase price of five thousand dollars per TDR for the Fiscal Year 2023 PAR cycle and the TDR Reserve. The APAB assesss TDR values when establishing their recommended price. There is a need to fairly compensate participants for the value of their land that they have protected while also seeking to reach as many applicants as possible. Fiscal impact. A maximum impact of two million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-one dollars is available in the fifth Fiscal Year 2023 budget, which includes ten thousand dollars of anticipated agricultural transfer tax revenue in the current fiscal year. Conclusion Recommendation. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners consider the APAB recommended price and direct staff to open the PAR cycle to receive applications and continue with the TDR Reserve Pilot Program.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. So, gentlemen, motions, discussion, questions?
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to make the motion unless you.
Oh, no, no, no. I saw, like I alluded to before, um, you know, with this, these, uh, groups that are getting together. I mean, is this price going to get this program moving? We've never, I mean, we've had a little bit of movement every year, but not really substantial. I mean, are we going, is this going to really start that going or what, what's the feedback you're getting?
It's really hard to predict.
Yes.
Who's going to, and, you know, where they are in the time of their lives, whether, you know, they want to retire, they need the money now, whether they want to wait a few years, see what happens with the price. Maybe they've already made, uh, an agreement with a developer to sell them. There's a free market that goes on in the background that we're not even involved in until they come time to sell them. So, um, I, and just as note, I do believe we have well over eight thousand TDRs still left, if that's correct. I, I had a calculation from last year and subtracted off what we just did. So, I mean, there's a lot of TDRs out there.
And that's eight thousand left in the county that are not accounted for. They can be purchased by an individual developer. They can be purchased by the county.
Yes.
They're quote unquote on the open market.
Correct.
Certified.
And how often do we, I, I know it's been almost about a yearly thing, but because things are changing so much out here right now, is there plans to maybe put a second or third get together in on this to maybe to discuss this price if it's, if it's stagnant?
So if we get no offers or very few offers, we absolutely could come back and have you reeval- reevaluate the price. The problem is, it takes a really long time to go through the process. So, I mean, this is a really good time to be doing it. And as Jen said, we're still wrapping up some from last year. But they have to hire an attorney. There's a lot of paperwork that gets involved.
It's not easy.
Yeah, it's not easy.
And that's why I said to go through all this and then nothing happens. I mean, it, it's essential that this program works. So whatever we need to do to make it work, you know, as, which means my twenty percent, I'm, I'm, I'm a hundred percent into making this program work.
So let me give you a couple of statistics just from last year that I pulled together. Just, I'm not sure it directly correlates to your question, but in trying to answer your question. So in Fiscal 2022, I looked at all, all TDR transactions. So I wasn't discriminatory about which ones went to, to PAR and which ones went to, and what type of TDR they were. So that, that's not on the table, but is, but trying to follow general trends. So in Fiscal 2022, there were two private transactions. I think, I took out all of the transactions that were involved, the county programs, because we wanted to look at just those that were within the private market. Um, and there were two private transactions in all of Fiscal Year 2022 of five thousand dollars or more. And Fiscal 23 so far, there have been two private transactions of five thousands or more, five thousand dollars or more recorded in July alone. And two private transactions of five thousand or more having been recorded in August. So that's only two months.
How many TDRs?
How many total TDRs? Um, hmm, I don't know that I have that, uh, in front of me at the moment. But let's see, that, the eight, so there were six. Probably on the order of twenty-five TDRs.
Okay.
But I'm guessing on that. I, I didn't calculate that all out. I was trying to be broad in general. But just to give you an idea of about the price we're increasing, and then there's always a little bit of lag. Uh, we get constant calls at the, I take constant calls at the office about the current price of TDRs and, and give out a report. We can produce a report and give it out to anyone who inquires as to what the current price is. to anyone who inquires as to what the current prices are. So, so it's not instantaneous, and as Mary said, this program takes time to implement.
Do you think twice a year would be pushing it?
To look at the price?
Mm-hmm. I'd be, you know what I mean, almost, you know, and it doesn't mean that we have to go up, down, or whatever, but just to revisit it to see, hey, where we are, even, even if just a checkpoint to kinda, you know, to where if we need to, maybe proceed further.
Commissioner, I think I can speak to that a little bit. Um, just based off of the general timeline, the reason we do it based off of participation right now, it would push them beyond the fiscal year, uh, basically, so un- unless there's a strong need where we're not seeing reasonable participation. Obviously, as Mary Beth said, if we are not getting good participation, we're going to come back to you and try and see what we can do to get the program where it needs to be. But otherwise, we try and keep them on a preset cycle because that cycle takes so long. Again, it takes almost a full fiscal year from start of advertisement to closing the final transaction.
Yeah, I know it's not easy, so like I say, I just, but uh, so whatever, like I say, just whatever we can do to make it successful.
Okay. Mr. Vice President, I'd like to move that we approve the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board's recommendation of five thousand dollars per TDR for the FY twenty twenty-three PAR cycle and the TDR Reserve, and direct staff to open the PAR cycle to receive applications and continue with the TDR Reserve Pilot Program.
Second, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Any further comments on this matter? None being heard, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, next item on the agenda is old business, Department of Public Works, Adequate Public Facilities. Morning.
Good morning.
Alright, so I'm gonna go right into the memo, Carrie Dahl, Director of Public Works. With me, I have John Riktenis from, uh, Walsall, Montgomery.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to be here.
So, uh, subject, Adequate Public Facilities, Traffic Engineer Consultant. Background. Department of Public Works and the Department of Planning and Zoning is currently developing updates to Calver County's Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. On June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the Department of Public Works and Department of Planning and Zoning held a meeting with the Board of County Commissioners about the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance Updates for Calver County. Discussion. During the briefing, the B O C C requested that the Public Works return with a traffic engineer to discuss the B O C C's traffic concerns in Calver County. The top, the Department of Public Works has coordinated the support of John Riktenis from Wal- Walsall, Montgomery to attend the meeting today to discuss any questions or concerns the board might have about the traffic in Calver County. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusions/recommendations. Following the discussion, Public Works recommends that the board provide guidance on updating the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance for roads in Calver County. And without further ado, I will turn over this presentation to, uh, John.
Alright. It's good, again, thank you so much for having me today. Glad to talk, talk about traffic for you. Um, so a little background behind me, so, um, I'm with Walsall, Montgomery. We're a Maryland-based consulting, uh, transportation consulting firm. We've worked for the Calver County for many years. I've been off and on, working on some projects with this county for pretty much almost my entire twenty-two years, um, in this industry. I would say, I'm, so I'm the Vice President in charge of our Traffic Engineering Department, so I know a few things or two about traffic. Just to let you know about our firm, we, we, ninety-five percent of our work is with public agencies. So, we do not do work for the private, um, side. So I do have a background, working a lot with more, uh, Maryland counties, the rural counties. Again, here, I've worked with Talbot County for many years, actually helped develop their initial transportation plan back in two thousand and six. Uh, worked with, um, Carroll County, Howard County, just some more of the rural ones, so, worked with them before. Then a lot of, I've done a few development of a traffic impact analyses for these counties on behalf of them, as well as also reviewing these, so I do have a good background behind the analyses, so. Okay, so the two topics I want to talk about today, um, obviously, traffic-related. So, the first one is talking about level service. So obviously, the, this ordinance really dictates, you know, what, um, what level of service is adequate, right, for the county. Um, so I'm gonna kinda go into the background of, of the, of the methodology of level service and about the analyses in, in more detail. The second topic is, is talk about more about the traffic impact analyses. So again, this ordinance talks about, you know, dictates like when a traffic analysis should be done. I'll kinda go into more of the components of a traffic impact analysis, really kind of to talk about what's, what's important to the county on those, so, next slide. So, uh, going into level service and its adequacy. So, currently, the Calver County, what it defines as adequate for level service, so for county roads, it's level service C or better, so A or B. Uh, for town center roads, it's a level service D or better. Um, so obviously, there's a lot of state-maintained roadways here. A lot of the analyses, uh, that, that you see, um, because they, they do impact state roads, uh, I'm gonna kinda compare what this, what their, their adequacy as well. So, they define it as level service D or better, so. So a little more about, more about this, so level, level service D, least level service in general. It, the county does talk about, you know, this is for intersections. It really, it doesn't, it doesn't really define it, is it for the overall level service for the intersection versus more, is it talking about more level service for the approaches, the turning movements? So, just wanna let you know that. Where the state, a lot of their, their guidelines kinda go into the overall level service, plus talks about, you know, um, analyzing the movements. So I did, did some research on some other counties in Maryland, uh, just kinda comparing what, what their, their ordinances say about level service to. So this, uh, table you see here, this actually comes from Saint Mary's County, their ordinance. Um, they all do a, they kinda do things a little differently. This is sort of a little more detail, kinda, kinda splits them up by their zoning districts. Um, but it's pretty similar, where a lot of their, their rural areas, they also, uh, define level service E or better as, as that adequacy. Um, what's interesting is they do kinda go into, no matter which type of zoning district, the town centers and the village centers is that threshold is level service C. Whereas here, it's more of a D. Uh, they do have more, more development districts where they do define it as, as D is sort of their threshold. They don't go into whether it's a county versus a state road in their ordinances, nor do they kinda talk about whether it's an intersection or if it's like an overall level service versus more of an approach level service. Couple of other counties, just to note, so, um, Hartford County is just, is another one kinda looked at. They have a more updated version. So with the way they define it is, you know, whatever development inside their development envelope, whether it's a county or state road, it's, that, that threshold level service D. If it's outside that development, um, development threshold, even if it's county or state, it's level service C. So again, they don't really define whether it's an overall level service or approach, so, kinda, let you know. Uh, Talbot County, which is one I've worked with before, they've got an interesting word, where they say, any of the lane and lane approaches, uh, must be at or above a level of service C. Again, they don't define as a state or a county either. But they do define as, it's, it's not necessarily the overall level service, but it's more of that, those approaches at, on a road or at an intersection. They actually go into further, talking about if an intersection that you're impacting, if it's currently at a level service D or E, uh, you, you can't make it worse, okay? And if you, if there is an intersection or a road that, that's currently a level service F, if you're gonna be impacting it, you must improve that to a level service E. So if you're gonna impact this, this, this failing roadway intersection, you better help us make it better, so. Again, they don't, uh, uh, they don't, they don't define by, based on a, a county versus state roadway either.
Now, those counties that don't make that definition, are their arteries as vital as, say, our state connections? I mean, basically, the four ways in and out of here are all on a state road.
Yeah.
And so, it's hard on definition when people are, are looking at it to understand where the difference of control of Route Four opposed to control of, say, a county road.
Yeah.
All of our roads have to dump out on that artery.
Yes.
Do they have the same scenario?
Um, they, I, I would say they do have a lot of state roads that, that, that are, they should probably be impacted. I mean, obviously, they have like, like Talbot County, you've got US fifty out there, an example, ninety-five in, in Hartford County. So, I, you would, would think that those type of, of roads are, should be influenced by it. So, it, that's why I'm saying, it, it might be a good idea to make sure we sort of define that, you know.
I was gonna say, cuz yeah, cuz what we do on our road impacts that road which impacts everything.
Yes, and I think it's a good idea to sort of define that, so. Uh, it, it was kind of vague reading there, the, the other ones. So I think it's a good idea to kinda, really clarify and define a lot of these, whether it's for a state or county versus, you know, this overall level service versus a, where approach level service. Next slide. Okay, so what makes the level service great? So, there's two types of methodologies. One is old, kinda archaic, is not preferred method anymore. I don't know if you've ever heard of these before or not. The critical lane volume, it's more of a planning level. It's, it's based on your volumes and your capacity ratios. So basically, just kind of your inputs of your volumes and the amount of room, the amount of capacity you have, have on the roads themselves. So, not a preferred method, to, to really make a lot of decisions, I would say. Whereas the high-capacity manual, this is what's, is naturally recognized, is what we, is what we typically use. It's what was actually used in the, the Calver County's transportation plan, as far as for their analyses. It's much more robust, you can do, there's different types of analyses based on the type of facility, whether it's an intersection, whether it's a corridor segment, if it's a, uh, interchange ramp, a bike facility, a pet facility, so all different types of facilities. And what that kinda gives, the results of that, is it'll give you a level service grade to it. It, it, how you come to that level service is dependent on the type of facility. I'll go into that a little later. Um, it does give you the, your volume-capacity ratio, it's a pretty common information that you include in written analyses. And for, especially for a, for intersections, it's good to have, um, results of queues at your intersections. The queues aren't dictated by the level service, it's more of an additional metric that you should definitely look at in the analyses. Next slide. So again, this is coming from the Calver County's transportation plan. They do have, this is sort of their intersection level service analysis that they did, um, for, for that plan. It's based on, I believe, twenty seventeen existing volumes, so it's a little dated. But the, you know, obviously, they, they looked at level services along a, a number, obviously mostly Maryland, around two and four intersections, their state roadways. So it kinda, kinda gives you a general sense of, you know, the level services, you know, as you go from A to F, you know, how congested it sort of looks out there. Next slide. Okay, so drilling down into the actual methodologies, the analysis. So, you got intersections, and what, what is defined, um, for level service for intersection? It is average control delay, okay? So basically, how long you're waiting at, at an intersection. The thresholds, um, based on this, this chart here, talks, it's a little different if, whether it's an unsignalized versus a signalized intersection. You kinda see these thresholds between grades, it's a little lower for unsignalized. That's because your sort of level of tolerance for, for waiting is less at unsignalized intersections than, than signalized intersections. So just wanna let you know, it's not exactly apples to apples when you look at signalized and unsignalized intersections. So, for signalized, you do get a low, a level service for the overall average of that intersection, plus it gets into more of the approaches, um, level service, plus the movements of, of each of those approaches. And whereas unsignalized doesn't give you an overall play, it's just whatever the, the stopped movie, movements are to give you a level service there. So I, I wanna raise that as, I think it's important to, when you're analyzing intersection with level services, you include not just the overall, but the approaches. Say, example, you're at a, a signalized intersection, the overall is level service E. But you might have a failing approach, right? But it's not really, doesn't show it on that overall level service grade. You might, because it's, it's failing, you'll probably have some, some really large queues, you know, blocking some inter, turning movement, uh, lanes and things like that. So it's really, I feel like, if you're, if you wanna clarify level service, it's maybe good to define it as overall and the, you know, approach and turning movement level service. And this is just other methodologies that we do, you may or may not see, I think you're more interested in more of the intersections, is more of the corridor segment level services. So this is, you know, corridors outside the influences of the intersections. You have a two-lane road, one lane each direction, it's, that level service is defined by speeds, or even the percentage of time you're following vehicles. A multi-lane section, you know, two or more lanes per direction, that's really more on, more volume-based density, the saturation of, of vehicles on that corridor. Obviously, when you reach capacity, your level service is F, it's failing. To go next, next, uh, slides. Next couple is just some examples for you as what it looks like on these segments as far as from a level service A, not a lot of, lot of volume. B, as it, obviously, the traffic increases if you keep going with these slides. More and more traffic, and then last one here, level service, you're reaching F. You're, you're almost in, in congested scenarios, so it's just sort of what it looks like. Alright, go ahead. Okay, so that's what level services is, what's sort of defined. Now I kinda go into, you know, how we, how do we, how we develop this analysis. So, the analysis is based on peak hour delays. So, what that means is we look at certain, the, the peak periods. So a morning peak, the evening peak, a lot of times, sometimes the weekend peak, right? So, what we'll do is we'll count, we'll, we'll do a certain period in the morning, two, three hours. We will find out what are, in, you, you collect the data, you know, fifteen-minute intervals. You, you, you basically find what are the four, uh, highest consecutive, uh, fifteen-minute intervals. That is defined as your peak hour, okay? You do this for the morning and peak, evening peak. Obviously, that kinda gets a lot of your commuter type of, of volumes. Weekend, especially if you're in more of a commercialized area, a lot of commercial, weekend traffic, you'll do the same thing for, like, a lot of times, like, for Saturday, so. Um, so, once we have the peak hours kind of figured out and balanced, we will use the software. So again, some, some, some terms to throw it out there, so we use the high-capacity software, it's one type of, of, of method we use. Synchro and syn- traffic is something, it's probably more commonly used out there. Um, actually, if you look on the screen, that little green blob there, that's actually sort of a, a simulated network of roadways. That's sort of what synchro looks like. This is actually what they use for the transportation, um, plan for Calver County. Um, this is actually what the highway uses to develop their, their signal timings as well. I've been involved with that as well. So obviously, in, in Calver County, you have two coordinated systems. You've got one on four, but in Huntington, I think there's two signals. Obviously, in Prince Frederick, there's a six signal system there, so. This is how sort of they define, how they, how they create these analyses, okay? Other ones that you may see as sidereal, this is used for more roundabout analyses. And if you get into some really more complex interchanges, multimodal modes and things like that, visum is, is, is your way to go. So just wanna get, let you know what those are called. And go ahead. So that's sort of my spiel on level service, and is there any other que- questions, comments about level service before we move on?
So, some of the surveys we've seen, they've averaged. We hate averaging. You know, of course, from ten to four in the morning, there's no traffic going through those intersections.
Yeah.
But during peak hours, may take you three cycles to get through a light. And we don't believe that averaging is a, an appropriate way to assess those intersections. But it looks good, it makes your report card, you know, you get a better level of service when you do that. But that doesn't help you when you're sitting there in peak and waiting for three cycles of a light.
Gotcha, yeah, and this, this is definitely the state of practice of how you do it, is you finding, again, that highest value, that worst-case scenario within, within. Obviously, within that hour, you are gonna have some twenty, thirty minutes of really bad stuff, no, totally problem. I mean, and it's really a matter of, um, with this analysis and how you calibrate it. So, I'm gonna talk about this a little later. So, your existing conditions, making sure you're modeling this the best as you can as far as what's out there. Make sure what your, that eye test is being, is being implemented into your analyses, so. I know, like, here, that, again, I mentioned how State Highway has Maryland for the signal systems. Yeah, they have this analysis created, you know, this is, you know, their, their best-case scenario of how the, how they should operate, whether it, does it operate that way or not? I, I don't know. If, if they haven't gone out there and adjusted the timings a long time, they do get out of whack after a while. So it's like going to a doctor, you know, like an appointment, you gotta make sure, you, you have to go back here and there to make sure that some adjustments are made, so.
So, and the other uniqueness that we have is because we are a peninsula, everything has to go on Route Four. I think we're the only jurisdiction in the state that has that unique characteristic, where you can't disperse traffic.
Yeah.
Everybody's forced on Route Four, and I think my concern has been in the past when we've done traffic studies for. And I think my concern has been in the past, when we've done traffic studies for projects, they only look at the impact to that little road that that dumps on. It doesn't take into account the impact at the end of the road where it intersects with Route Four.
Sure.
So I've been told, we've never had a project where they said there was a traffic impact.
Gotcha.
But you get to that intersection and, you know, there were three projects on that road and each one of them dumps two hundred cars. Individually, it's, the traffic engineer says, no big deal, you're just dumping two hundred cars. But then all of a sudden, you've got six hundred cars coming out the end of that road, and we've got to figure out a way to capture that.
Gotcha, and definitely my next section, we'll talk about that. We'll kind of go through how do you, basically, your study area, how you really make sure you define that the way you want it. And you are capturing, you know, all the, I would say, intersections that you feel like are really going to be impacted too, so.
And it's, and at the end of the day, it's about the tolerance of our citizens and what they believe. We had a transportation expert come to us a year or two ago and he said, your traffic's not as bad as DC, you don't have any traffic problems.
Yep.
There's a difference tolerance level in Calver County than there is in Washington DC. And I don't think that our citizens would agree that we don't have a traffic problem because it's not like DC.
Yes.
And so, you know, sitting at a light cycle for making three trips before you can move through the intersection may be acceptable in some places, but for our residents, it is not acceptable.
Yeah, I totally get that, yeah.
And so what we're trying to capture in this updating of the APFO is how do we capture the entire impact of a project on the main artery when there's no way to disperse that traffic?
Gotcha, yes, and obviously, that's level service is sort of, you know, trying to lower that or is part of that exercise, so.
Because that's what we hear, I mean, when you're out in the community, you hear about growth and traffic. And right now, traffic's not very bad on that road, but, you know.
Sure.
Three hours from now, it's going to be a different scenario, and they're just not used to it. And they don't, they didn't move here to put up with that, for lack of a better term. I grew up here and I live on a, I grew up on a state artery, and you could play basketball in the middle of the road when I was a kid.
Because it was dirt.
Yeah, well, no, it wasn't dirt, it was blacktop. But today, you can barely cross that road, you know, after three o'clock in the afternoon. So it's been quite an adjustment for those of us that have been here, and for those that have come here, it's not what they came for.
Yeah.
And so we're just trying to figure out a way, moving forward, how we capture that impact and be able to respond to that impact, looking at the bigger picture.
Gotcha.
Of an entire system.
And obviously, what you can control here is this level service, and what you can control here is how we can dictate and review and analyze these impact studies.
And because of the Bridge of Solomons, we have a lot of transit traffic.
Yes.
Which we can't really control, but we have to account for.
Yep.
We can't, you know, you can't have a blind eye and say, well, it doesn't exist because we don't control it. We have to account for that traffic. So, you know, some people said, well, seven, seventy percent of the traffic on the road is transit, so, you know, that's not our problem. Well, it is our problem. It's coming through our community and, you know, what they do in St. Mary's impacts us. But we've got to account for that as we move forward.
And a lot of the analyses, if you do it properly, is you do account for heavier vehicles, larger vehicles. They're bigger, take up more space, they're slower, so you got to make sure that that does influence your traffic flow too, so. Absolutely, so. Gotcha, so I want to kind of move on and just kind of talk about, go on to the traffic impacts analysis. So obviously, the AP, the ordinance kind of dictates as far as when, when you want to, when you need to do an impact study, right? So I'm going to kind of compare, again, sort of Calver County with state, with some of the other counties as well. So right now, the way it's defined for Calver County is if you have sites four hundred or more, two-way trips per day, or sites forty or more, they're peak hour trips, you require a study. Comparing to what state says, theirs is more, sites more than fifty peak hour trips. So the county is a little bit more aggressive when requiring a study, which is great. Just comparing the other ones, so Hartford County, a little bit more developed, more populated area. Theirs is two hundred and forty-nine trips per day. St. Mary's didn't really define a threshold requirement there. Talbot is more, it's similar to the state, just to let you know. Go ahead, next slide. Okay, so these are, once you have an analysis, it's kind of really want to talk about sort of the components. I think a really important part here is this initial preliminary scoping meeting, that's sort of part. So Calver County does have an impact analysis guidelines, it's in your current ordinance. And the state does as well, so. So the big part here is this preliminary scoping meeting, where you're going to get the county together with the state as well as the consultant for the developer, you're really, you're defining the study, making the decisions of how to do the study, what should be in the study. Because ultimately, the county and state are going to be reviewing and ultimately approving this report, so. So just, here's a list, you know, they'll talk about the study area, how big it should be, you know, what counts, what intersections should be studied, the counts needed, the background development to include, sort of in the no-build scenario in the future. The land use types, so what the land use type of that proposed development will define what it should be defined as. Any of the future growth rates, the percent distributions of traffic. So, you know, how is that traffic going to be distributed along, throughout your study area? And any other assumptions? So the study area, the way it's defined for Calver County now, it says, is existing county, state roads or intersections from each site access, multiple sites, to the first minor collector arterial road intersection. So the state defines it a little differently, so they kind of do it more based on the size of the development. So if it's a small one, it's more of a quarter-mile radius, medium-sized, a half-mile radius. And if it's a large one, it's a one-mile radius for that study area. To compare some other ones, so Hartford County, it defines it similar to the county, but to the first major collector or higher classification. So maybe this is something to look at, so maybe if you wanted to find a little higher classified road to, as your, as your end. That may capture your state roads, it may capture your Maryland four for that particular development. Okay, so next slide. Okay, so there are parts of the, of the analysis, you're going to try to capture your existing volumes. You define as trying to utilize traffic counts. You want to use recent ones. So one-year-old is really what you want to do. Certain scenarios, you can go as much as two years as old in certain scenarios, but nothing more than that. You do that because the recent counts will capture any of the updates to developments, any of the movements within that area. So definitely want to keep that, that's great to have.
So COVID affected, so from what you see, do you believe we are back to normal post-COVID now?
It is pretty darn close. Of course, the way of life, especially work, the way work is now, you know, a lot of people telecommuting, it may not, I don't know if it'll ever get as bad, but it's pretty darn close. I would say definitely, at least where I live, the evenings is just as bad, so. So now, and obviously during COVID, if we were doing an impact study, you couldn't use any volumes, you know, couldn't count data during twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one for that reason.
Because we have employees now that work from home.
Yeah.
That did not pre-COVID and post-COVID, we believe a majority of those are going to stay home. So there is an impact just from us, and we know that impact extends out to other industries and other businesses.
Absolutely does.
But at some point, we're going to get back to what I call the post-COVID normal, and, yeah.
And I would say, I would feel comfortable going back and doing attorney movement counts, not making adjustments to it at this point, so. We had to do that during COVID. Again, we're going to count the morning peaks, evening peaks, even for maybe a lot of the resident, non-residential developments, you want to capture the weekends. Because, I mean, you definitely want to see what's going on, a very different pattern of travel. You're getting more, capturing more internal trips versus, you know, external trips, right?
So I think I've noticed in the last several months, Saturdays have become as bad in Prince Frederick as, or worse than weekdays.
Yeah.
And worse than I think they were pre-COVID. I don't know if I'm true in that statement, but.
Tourism advertising is paying off.
There you go. Saturdays have gotten pretty bad in Prince Frederick, middle of the day.
And I remember, and I recall, when I was doing the Talbot County, for that transportation plan, we did analyze weekend traffic, especially around to the eastern area. Again, you want to capture that weekend, how bad is it really? So it's a good idea to have that information in an analysis.
How old is the last time, when was the last time we took studies over a broad area?
So here, it looked like, so the transportation study, the plan was, I mean, it was adopted in twenty twenty. It looked like twenty seventeen was what the existing data used for that.
So as it stands right now, we're coming up on six-year-old data.
Yep, absolutely. And obviously, part of that, you're looking, they forecasted future volumes as well, so. But yeah, it's, a lot of times, doing some nominal updates based on existing conditions is worthwhile. So part of the existing conditions, again, we're developing the volumes. Part of this is signal timings. Again, I'm going to talk about, signal timings is really important to have that information where you're developing the analysis, reviewing it. What you want to do is have calibrated analysis, I kind of mentioned this before. So again, just because you gather this data, you do want to go out there and observe the traffic, what are really the queues that you see, you know, travel corridor, what are those travel times, really make sure that is true. Because you do, you're able to make the adjustments to these models, to make sure it is accurate as you can, so, yeah. Go ahead, next slide. So the next step is the background conditions. I call this sort of the future no-build. So you're trying to project when that site development is going to be constructed and onboard, but you're looking at what is the traffic going to look like without that development in hand. So to do that, you're going to agree upon an approved growth rate from that meeting, the approved developments to include from that meeting. What's interesting is, this is very common, how are Hartford County, not just they look at approved developments, they look at pending developments as well. So say you have, they're doing a traffic impact study at the same time as a couple other ones, so. And these aren't online yet, you're not capturing those. So they'll do sort of an alternative analysis of, oh, I know these other developments are coming onboard, they just haven't been approved yet. So they'll actually look at it more of a pending scenario to see how bad that really is. I thought that was kind of interesting.
No, I think that's a smart approach because you'll see so many people say, well, I used to could do this, or you, but things change. You know, conditions change, but that single road out there does not change. And that's the problem, because, you know, we don't have a way to encumber all of these things, you know? And even bigger than, I mean, we're talking roads, but it gets even into, how do you move water? That, you know, I mean, you see the stormwater management problems and septic issues. I mean, it's just a whole tidal wave of conditions that change with that, and that's, that to me, that's the only approach, is what is potentially coming.
Potentially, yep, absolutely.
You know, because I think back in nineteen ninety, if that approach was taken, this county would look different.
Because large projects take, you know, years.
Absolutely.
From concept to actual opening the doors. And in that time, you have three small projects come in, so.
Exactly.
It does make a lot of sense to figure out a way to capture as much as you can.
Yep.
And you look like the bad guy, but Commissioner Hans is right, it's a Saturday, two Saturdays ago, Zach had a game out of county. Lived down the southern part of the county, and I was like, where did all these cars come from on a Saturday? On Saturday? I mean, when I was a kid, it was a ghost town, you know, on the weekends, I mean, and I'm going, and the time that I allot to get somewhere, I'm building more time, and Karen's like, why are we leaving so much earlier? Because I don't know what to expect.
Sure.
You know, and so it's a problem that really we should have addressed years ago, and so hopefully.
So I farm, so I move big equipment on Route Four every once in a while. And it used to be, you'd move on a Saturday morning, Sunday mornings are the best. You'd move on a Saturday morning, you had it until about ten o'clock. Now it's eight o'clock. Saturday morning, if I'm going to move something big, I try to be on Route Four by eight o'clock. Because, and by noon, like I've said, it's just, it's nuts.
Gotcha.
And even on weekdays now, I don't know what the traffic study is going to say, but even on weekdays now, it used to be from nine to eleven was a pretty good time to move.
Yeah.
Not anymore. So there's, some dynamic has changed, and I don't know if it's an increase in traffic or people's just normal movements, but something has altered the traffic in Calver County post-COVID that was not the same pre-COVID.
Gotcha, yeah. Yeah, maybe some of their work lifestyles, as far as when they go into work is a big thing.
And you just, you just said it, because with all working from home, you see this, I'm doing this on my lunch break, well, when your lunch break might have been in DC or Annapolis, but now you're working from home, so your lunch break will be in your backyard.
Absolutely.
And, you know, and you're seeing that influx, and that was unforeseen.
We also saw during the last couple of years, there's more and more people wanting to get out, wanting to get out into nature and out into the community and this and that. And so we are seeing a lot of people coming into the county. I sit there and I see the tags coming in, DC, Delaware, Pennsylvania, you know, stickers from all over the place coming into the county, which is great to have them come down and visit and spend some tourism dollars. But in the same token, building a development in Lesby, even a small development, still has a traffic impact on the two traffic lights in Dunkirk.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm glad to see that we're looking at the possibility of taking a look at the big picture, not just, if you build this, you have to worry about your deceleration and acceleration lane. We got to get beyond that, because every single house, no matter where, has an effect on the bridge down in Solomons, and it has an effect on the lights in Dunkirk and everywhere in between.
And look at two thirty-one, we've been saying that for the last couple of years, two thirty-one is a disaster. I mean, that is, I, you know, I cringe for folks that have to go to work in those little industrial parks or whatever. I mean, that is, that, there's way too much traffic for that road to handle.
Gotcha. There's access issues in and out of those. Understood. And then obviously, part of the background conditions, if there's any approved or funded, any roadway projects improvements within that future area, you'll take that into account. Again, do, once you have all that information together, create your future volumes, you'll do more capacity analysis. And the last, the next last piece is your projected build. So this is your future build with that site in hand. So you basically add that development into your analysis. So we're creating what sites, what generated volumes are. This is from the ITE manual that was approved. You kind of, you need to figure out what the percentage of distributed traffic is from your site out, dispersed out into your study area. And then from there, you assign the traffic and create your total future volumes. Once you have that, then you now, then you analyze that. You really kind of analyze the capacity of that scenario with the future background scenario. What did that, what did that development really do to impact that, your roadway network? Is it just a natural future, this is what's going to happen anyways, or is it really causing some adverse impacts? So, and then the last piece is the, next slide. Is part of your recommendations, you're explaining what your results are, what are the adverse impacts? And then here, you're going to define what are the mitigation steps you're going to improve these, right? So again, maybe it's a certain type of capacity improvement operations, a safety improvement you're going to do. You're going to develop the analyses of that improved impact to show them what needs to be done. Ultimately, create sort of a concept design of what that is and estimate as far as how much of, how much the cost would be, so. So that's sort of the components of a traffic impacts analysis report. Any other questions?
So this may be unrelated, but, so there are six or seven traffic lights in Prince Frederick in a stretch of about less than a mile and a half.
Yes.
We've been pushing state highway to time those lights. We believe it would make a significant improvement to the traffic flow through Prince Frederick. Is that a correct assessment?
It's definitely, it, so those lights are coordinated, they're interconnected, they talk to each other, they're having, they.
Well, then they're, they're working against us. If they're communicating, they're working against us.
State highways tells us that's the impediment to doing that, is because they don't. And they'd have to come in and install all new technology to get them to talk to each other.
Yeah, I was looking at their, I was looking at their list of all their systemized intersections, it was on there. It's older technology as far as how they're connected, whether they, that's still being. It is, it's, uh, older technology as far as how they're connected, whether they, they, that's still being maintained by them, I don't know. But.
Morris code was an old technology too, and it worked. This doesn't.
They, and I know state highways, they're slowly getting to, um, update their technology, you know, more wireless systems. So they, that, that the signals can communicate together. I don't know where it stands as far as that particular system. It does, if you update, if you look, analyze and update signal timings, it does a world of differences, make things, the flow improve, unless you analyze it correctly.
I look at Ocean City.
Oh, yeah.
They've got that whole five miles.
Yep.
And, you know, we, we haven't mentioned in the past, I have to remember in the future, Dunkirk, we should time those two lights in Dunkirk.
Yep.
Because they definitely don't talk to each other.
Route one in Alexandria is a prime example.
Yeah.
You hit that first light green between 25 and 27 miles an hour, you'll drive the entire mile and a half without stopping.
Ocean City.
Yep.
It's going to work there, it should work here.
Yeah. So I, I'm not too sure how, with the last time they, they tried to retime those. It's a good question to ask, ask them.
So they told us it would cost a hundred thousand to $200,000 per light. To get them to, to get them to talk to each other, depending on the technology that currently existed, so.
That doesn't surprise me, so. But it does work and they're slowly getting through the state. They have a lot of signals, a lot of systems, so.
You'd think they would require that though, when they put those in, you would think as much as the state talks about traffic, right? As much as they talk about traffic and everything else and all the, the problems and expanding roads, that that would be standard on all their lights. And if not, they would go back and retrofit all of those, you would think.
What they're doing, because I, I, I do a lot of the traffic design, signal design for them, is that's kind of what they do. If you, if you are going to go in and make some improvements, whatever improvement it is, they'll try to go in and just systematically try to up, make the upgrades on their, their end. At least the ones I've worked on elsewhere, that's what they do.
So I think today our, our goal is to provide you with guidance moving forward, correct? And I believe, for me, uh, I believe the HCM process is what we probably want to use.
Yep, and you are using that now, so.
And we definitely want to broaden back our intersections because, you know, we're not, because we're rural, it's more spread out. And it's going to, it's a larger feeder area than it would be in a higher density situation. And just making sure that we're looking at a broader area of impact. And if we can work with planning, zoning and figure out what's coming or even, I don't know if we have the ability to look at, figure out what density is left on some of our roads to see what the impact might be. Because, you know, we're only seven miles wide. Some of our county roads are probably developed as much as they're going to be developed, others probably still have a lot of. And I know that it's not an exact science until they actually engineer a property. But we could probably get a pretty good idea of what's left on a lot of our roads that would, you know, add traffic. And the state highway, the last time they did our study, which was in 2016 or 2017, you know, they, they said that, you know, moving forward, that we weren't going to have significant, significant issues if we completed an east-west bypass. If we built two or three crossovers in Prince Frederick. Those are the two things that stuck out of my mind, and I'm thinking right off the bat, some of that ain't happening. You know, those crossovers, we've already developed, and they have to tear down buildings to put in the crossovers. We look at the cost of those bypasses and wetland issues and environmental impacts, and I'm not sure they can happen. The way state highway projects how they should flow. So we, you know, for us, we've got to look at those recommendations and figure out what is physically, what we're physically capable of doing and what's just not going to happen. Because, um, you know, looking at a map without figuring out the topography, uh, it's easy to say, you just build the road. It's when you actually get out there and walk and have to put your boot, your knee boots on when you figure out if it can really happen, so.
I agree.
Here's what the challenges for us, so I, you know.
Mr., Mr. President, I, we talked earlier about emergency preparedness. This is emergency preparedness month. I can't sit there and look at our roads and think that we owe our taxpayers anything less than a C in normal operating conditions. Because we only have limited ingress and egress out of the county, if there's an emergency that we have to move or our citizens have to get out, how are you going to sit there if we can't on a regular workday maintain a non-failing grade of a D, E, or F? How are we going to take care of it in an emergency?
Commissioner Gabbie, to your point, take the Solomons Bridge, one accident, you shut everything down both ways. You've seen accidents on Route four, you shut down an entire section, I mean, all these arteries, all it takes. And it doesn't have to be some major accident, it could just be a fender bender, you know, even somebody just breaking down and you shut it all down. So to me, we're already failing because going back to the emergency thing, if you had, God forbid, a weather event or something where there was an evacuation, how would you do it? I remember so many different discussions when Dominion was being built, you know, it's like some magic thing was going to come down. And we're not creating any more property out here. So this illusion of, oh, we can build this and build that and there's no effect. I mean, we're just talking one aspect, just roads, and we already see, I mean, to be honest, it's an F, it really is. I mean, because it fails if there's a time where there's an accident and you can't get through. It fails if there's a storm event, anything, and you can't get through, or if there's certain periods of time. I mean, these roads should be accessible 24 hours a day to, at least for a moderate, um, expectation. And with single arteries that we have, I, I mean, my personal opinion, I just don't see it. And the thought that we could add thousands more units out here, which means thousands more cars, and to think that we're not affecting the waterways, the everything, I mean, it's ludicrous. And I go back to what I said earlier, I think if, if the, if the eyes, if the eye test was this years ago, we'd be looking at a completely different county. So I, you know, it's no need to make it any worse. I think now it's just trying to, uh, maintain and repair as best we can.
I think I saw a survey, uh, not too long ago, that said in Calvert County, we average almost three vehicles per household. I don't know how that compares to anybody else, but it sounds.
I'd say it's accurate. I'd say it's very accurate.
But so every time we go to a house, it's three more cars on the road.
And we're getting to multi-generational households now too.
Right, both kids are driving.
Right, both kids are driving, grandma and grandpa still live there and are driving and everybody else, so.
And how many times when you're in your travels, do you hear, I'm trying to be very politically correct, but someone doing a project say, well, I complied with what the county said. I complied with what the state, that's to get out of jail free card, right? Because once I complied, doesn't matter the impact that I made, I complied. But when you try to make that, to minimize that impact, all of a sudden, you're the bad guy. You know, I'll, I'll be 54, I got more years in the rearview mirror than I got in the front windshield, right? What about my kids? They've got a lot more in the windshield and I, you know, and I was lucky enough to be given this gift. And then to tear it up on my watch, no way.
So I see where St. Mary's allows LOSs of D. I, I just, I, I can't sit there and I believe our citizens in this county deserve an A, B, or C rating. And if anything's going to threaten that, it should be paused.
Have we given you direction?
I have, I have plenty of notes. And I'll be working with Mary Beth to put those, uh, into action for the review that's coming forward with you. And I'll also work with him on some of the things that he's mentioned.
Oh, he needs plenty of money now.
What's that, sir?
Oh, he needs plenty of money.
Oh, yep. That's what contractors usually do, how much money you got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Very enlightening.
So the next item on the agenda is we have guests from Talbot County, no less.
Commissioners, if I may, Mark Willis County Administrator, yes, we do. We're being visited by Mako. So each year, Mako's executive director and the current Mako president with, visit Maryland's county to update, uh, Mako's legislative activities and hear from elected officials about the needs and interests for the upcoming year. These visits help to inform Mako's work. Uh, it's valuable as we go through and we update as the year moves on. So with us today, we have Laura Price, who is the president, uh, Mako president, and she's from Talbot County, a council member as well. And we have the Mako executive director, Michael Sanderson. They're here to discuss whatever they and the commissioners might have on the agenda. Their personal, or I should say their political agendas.
Afternoon.
You're welcome.
Hey, but the one thing we're not is political.
Okay.
I missed that meeting.
Well, thank you so much. We're really grateful to be here with you today. Hope you all had an opportunity to, uh, attend the Mako Summer Conference last month, which was the biggest and best ever. So hope you all were there. And, um, you know, it's been already six months since good old Signe died. But it's still important and relevant to go over the, uh, items that occurred during, uh, session. And, um, we had some really great wins. We killed bills that needed to die, some of the things we do best. And certainly amended things in legislation, um, that needed changing and doing all that for the benefit of the counties. You know, the, I guess the last month or so of session, things really opened up. We were able to do things in person, shake some hands, make eye contact, which really makes a big difference. Um, and we got some amazing things done. There was about 2,700 bills last session, uh, no, no surprise. Mako analyzed about a third of them, about 900. They come very, very quickly and our Mako staff does an amazing job, um, getting that to, uh, to us. I'm very grateful for the work they do, but I'm also extremely grateful for the work of this gentleman to my left, Mr. Sanderson, who is the one who keeps this organization, um, going and, and such an amazing leader. I'm very honored to be able to serve this year with him, which is my final year in office. And it's a wonderful way to go out and work side by side with him. In, you know, as I said, in a very nonpartisan way, we, uh, look at these bills in a way that actually just affects our counties and not what our own political, uh, beliefs are. Um, and, and zeroing in on it in that way really, uh, gets it done. Because the elected officials are the ones ultimately making the decision, even though the staff does, you know, all of the pre-work. It makes us the most credible, um, organization in Annapolis, uh, because they know it's people like you and me who are ultimately making these decisions, um, on the legislation. So thank you to Commissioners Hans and Gadway for, uh, serving on the Legislative Committee, um, and giving your time for the, probably the first eight or 10 weeks, uh, on Wednesday mornings. Uh, the last couple of years have been virtually. Hopefully, this coming session, we can get back in person and, and meet and do that. But it takes a lot of time out of busy schedules to keep up, not only with the legislation that you have here back in our home counties, but also all the legislation that gets introduced in Annapolis. So appreciate that very much. One thing about today, we want to make sure that this is interactive so that you, rather than just giving us, you know, us giving you the presentation. And I know we're going to have a chance to, to have some lunch afterwards. We also want you to, you know, give us your feedback and tell us what Mako does good, what we do bad, hopefully not so much of that. And what we can improve. So we do need to hear from you. We, we work very closely with the Legislative Committee members. But this is the opportunity now for the other members of the commissioner, commission to, um, let us know what they're thinking as well. We want to involve everybody. And if you don't get those questions out today, know that, um, all of you are welcome to contact Mako and we will, uh, get those answers to you and work with you as best we can. We are, have four legislative initiatives every year as per our bylaw. So we are in the middle of that process right now. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be, um, narrowing those down from about the 10 we have right now down to four. But last year, you know, um, I had, you know, I've been able to work on this initiative subcommittee, and it's a really hard process. And, um, the, the initiative that I'd like to talk about before I turn it over to Michael is the, um, emergency transport bill, which has helped every single county. And I just wanted to give a brief overview of what that bill is for your citizens to understand and if you have questions about it. The law up until it got changed was reimbursing the counties $100 and only if they transported you to an emergency, uh, hospital. And certainly that hadn't been raised in, well, well over 20 years. So the bill did a few things. One, it upgraded from $100 to $150 per transport. Certainly that still needs to go up a little bit more, and we'll come back and have another bite at that apple in a few years to try to raise that some more. But now we get reimbursed no matter where we go, or even if we don't go anywhere. So if it's more, um, makes more sense to go to an emergency care unit, uh, urgent care facility, to a doctor's office or someplace else, we get reimbursed for all of those. But also to recognize the true health professionals that our EMTs and paramedics are. You go out and you treat them, and sometimes you don't need to go anywhere. Or if you're a bad patient, or a patient that just doesn't want to go, um, refuses transport, we get reimbursed for that as well. Which, again, which recognizes, um, the people that we hire that work for us, um, in the profession that they do so well. And so we get reimbursed for that. Um, and because now Medicare and Medicaid recognize, um, that, then we can also, we're always going to go out and answer a 911 call. But if the, uh, patient has, um, insurance, we can then bill their insurance, not only for those transports, but even if we don't transport. So that should make a huge difference in the bottom line of our, uh, emergency services budgets and, and have a big help. We also will, um, be able to be more proactive and, uh, go out and, this is where I always complain. The.
Mobile integrated.
Thank you. Mobile, see, that's the one thing, I don't have my notes and I just keep forgetting to add it in. But the mobile integrated health is, we know who our frequent flyers are, people who don't have access, uh, the same access to healthcare as some people. And so they use 911 as their healthcare. And so we start recognizing who, who those people are, identifying them. And when we're maybe not out on a call, we can go out and visit them and check on them. Um, in a rural, more rural county like us, Talbot and Calvert, you can go out and make those house calls, so to speak. But in a more urban area, you may set up on the street corner and do all kinds of pre-screenings, uh, blood work and, uh, check for things like that. And again, all of those things are reimbursable. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, um, to, to get, uh, adequate healthcare out to our communities for those who don't have access to it. So it's been, it's been a great bill overall. And, um, certainly I'm very appreciative of Mako of all the work that they did to get that done in the last couple of days, the waiting days of session. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael to give you the rest of the updates.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Grateful for your time today. I'm Michael Sanderson. I'm the director of the Maryland Association of Counties. We serve and represent all 24 jurisdictions across the state, all the elected officials and their services on the front line that affect and benefit all Marylanders. And, uh, we make a visit out to each elected body, um, over the course of each year and try and have this interaction, uh, which is beneficial for us and hopefully for you as well. I want to be respectful of your time and, and I know you've had an aggressive agenda today. We distributed some information for you. I'll skip most of that and, and other, and basically just do a couple bang-bang points, looking backwards and a couple looking forward. Because we're sort of at that point where the next legislative, legislative session is upon us. And the state legislature sets an awful lot of the terms that end up being the rulebook we all get to play by. That your budget and your priorities are affected by things at the state level. We want that to be a partnership rather than, uh, a leash, right? So, um, let me, let me speak to a couple of things. Looking back this year, um, Madam President spoke glowingly about a bill we're really proud about. The emergency services bill is a really important step forward. And it required lots and lots of little things to happen to come together. I'm proud that it did. We've got more work to do on that issue and we'll probably be coming back a couple of years from now after a study. But we made really good progress this year and had a lot of partners come out of the woodwork we didn't know we had. Another issue that's been, that I've been at this table speaking to you all about over the years is highway user revenues. This is the share of state gas taxes and transportation revenues that come back to local governments. And, um, this was, Annapolis is fond of doing things a step at a time and then declaring, uh, sunsets or cliffs, that sort of stuff. So, uh, four years ago in 2018, uh, we got a step forward on those local share that came back to, back to counties. And as is frequently the case, after those four years, we were about to go off a cliff. So we needed a bill this year at the very minimum to avoid falling off a cliff, preferably to move forward. We, we do the obvious thing. We put in a bill for full restoration, right? We, you know, you, you, why not, right? Swing for the fences, at least on the first pitch, right? So you take a deep swing at it. Um, what we end up getting out of this session is. So you take a deep swing at it. What we end up getting out of this session is a pretty good deal. Over the next four years, we'll click up, county level will go up by about half again where it is today, and we'll be there for a few years, and then we'll have another smaller cliff effect again. So Annapolis is very much in love with sunsets. That brings us back to the table, along with Baltimore City that's on its own track and the municipal governments to keep that sunset from happening. But we made another step forward. It's not the home run. It's not what we wanted. It's not full restoration. This remains a big and important fiscal issue between the state and its local governments, but we're at least moving in the right direction. And the people who had to vote for the bill this year are not the same leaders who were around in 2009 when this cut happened. Increasingly, the number of people who even remember that there used to be roads and bridges in the towns and counties effectively paid for by the state gas tax, that's what served us for decades and decades. We have to remind people of that, but having a vote on the books doesn't hurt.
What percentage are we at now?
Counties are back, this, this bill will get, get us back to, I want to say it's 22 and a half percent of the full nut, which is supposed to be 30 percent. The magic number is 30 percent of the universe should come back to local governments. This will get us back to 22 and a half percent. For counties, we're gonna be at around 35 percent of where we should be, and that's not right.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Weren't we 5 million at one point when it was at 100 percent? Wasn't that around the number? Because it was being cut when I was coming on.
No, I know, and I'll defer to County Administrator, but I know that we received, I believe it was 870,000, and it was 2.9 million or something like that.
Commissioners Mark Wills County Administrator, actually, in its heyday, the highest number we got was closer to $6 million. Now, what we see is kind of a degradation of that over time, but we, we went from $6 million to putting in as much as we could, but it's a huge difference.
And it went to almost zero, if I remember.
Right, so cut 90 percent from, from the 30 percent, but, so we're currently at 3.2 percent. Our, for the county piece of it, it was 15.3 percent, which is what we were going for in the bill. We're down to, you know, we, oh God, it was lower than that. We were clicked up to 3.2 percent, and this bill will take counties to 4.8 percent. But what's unfortunate about it, why, why Mako needs to keep working on this bill is because Baltimore City and the municipalities are now not only fully restored, but restored a couple tenths above where they were. And so they just did a weird formula that said, let's give everybody 50 percent more than what they had. But when Baltimore City and the municipalities were already so much closer than we were, they didn't understand that we're still gonna be at 4.8 percent when 15.3 would be full restoration for the counties.
Go figure, right?
Go figure.
And you're not even talking about teacher pension shift.
Right.
Oh, no.
All that started happening at the same time, but that's a whole nother, we don't have time, right? All at the same time, gas tax and that, and they were like, huh, deal with it.
Well, that and Kerwin.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, it, it looks to me like the, the share right now that comes to Calvert County, not, not including your municipal share, is about $1,005,000 today, and three years from now it'll click up to about 2.5 million. They've increased the pie slightly, and our share of it goes, gets a little bit larger. 7.7 is the number that you ought to be circling. That's the right share that should be coming back to Calvert County.
And how much is gas now?
The prices have come so far down.
Right.
So, so I, I will say, all of that is, that's a seeing-eye single, right? You step up to the plate, you swing for the fences, you get on base, you don't take an out, and we're still in the game. Okay, that's fine. It's not a full loaf, and you're right about that. One other thing I'll mention, and I want to do this briefly, this could be a nerdy technical discussion, but something that nobody's covered in the papers because it's not exciting, but mechanically it's important for the layers of government. When, when the state does property tax policy, for the most part, they've gotten in the habit of saying, property taxes are mostly a local revenue, so we'll let that be. The county or the town will decide, make a local option tax credit. If you want to give a credit for people putting a solar panel up or for your hometown heroes and so forth, you can do that as a property tax break. That's really common policy, and that's a, that's, we think that's the right way that they ought to do that sort of policy. When it comes to income taxes, it's mostly the state, but in Maryland, income taxes is number two on revenue sources for county governments. The easiest way to do a break on income taxes is a tax write-off, or in Maryland we call it a subtraction modification, right? Easiest way to do that, well, if you give someone a tax write-off, it comes out of the taxable income, and that's a tax break for the state, and then the county's just along for the ride. For years, we've been sending in this statement that says, when you're doing income tax policy, the state could give a state benefit by way of a tax credit. You can have a line item in a different place on your form that just says, you can get a $500 tax credit, boom, 500 bucks off of your taxes due. The state can do that and manicure it exactly the way they want. If they want to give a state benefit, they can. They don't need to bring the counties along. And for the most part, we've been throwing marshmallows against a brick wall on that policy. It's tough. This year, Governor really wanted to do, wanted to move the needle on income tax treatment for seniors and retirees. And it became pretty clear, there was money lying around. This was sort of a momentary surplus, and this budget had some, had some, some surplus. There was a capacity to do a number of things, including something there, and when they ironed out the details, they followed our path. So the state absorbed the full benefit. They wanted to give $1,000 benefit to most retirees under a certain income threshold. They gave it as a $1,000 state tax credit. If counties have the capacity and the wherewithal to do something else on top of that, either through your income taxes or your property taxes or something else, that's gonna be your call. Potentially, that could be a really big game changer for the way they do sort of, you know, intra, intra-governmental tax policy. If we're not gonna be along the ride, along for the ride on big income tax policy, and it can be local option effectively, that could be one of the bigger takeaways from this past session. And I get it, it's, it's, it's technical, no one's talking about it, but this is the place you ought to hear about it. We think that's an important win on a high-profile issue, and folks are gonna understand it. There's a line item, they get $1,000 bucks from the state, $1,000 is easier to understand than subtraction modification calculated on a worksheet, blah, blah, blah. There's some benefits to everybody there. So I think that's a good takeaway from the session behind us as well.
It is, because, but you're talking about a mindset that's been in place forever, where the one-size-fits-all. They don't know how to go about it with that approach. They don't, which, which, like you said, makes sense. But you just see it. Every time you watch session, you just see this, just cookie cutter approach, and especially jurisdictions that have no conception what a smaller jurisdiction does or what its focal point is, but they'll make this blanket thing that now everybody has to walk to that, and some maybe have zero experience into it whatsoever, so maybe some of that rubs off.
A consistent message from Mako every year, this, you know, I usually joke at this point and say, how many times do you have to see an advertisement before you buy the widget? It's about seven, and I think we have been doing that letter about, you know, for seven years, and they finally bought the widget. And, but again, it's not just for one year. We hope that this is gonna be the way they change their mindset going, going forward.
I'd like to think so. There's, I think there's a possibility, and now we have something to anchor to. You could do this the same way you did the retiree tax credit in 2022, right?
Just got a model in there, right, right, yeah.
Yeah, so you try, right? You try and, yeah, you try and get the little dogs to jump through the hoop, you know. So a couple of quick things looking forward. One is, the fiscal circumstance for governing right now is really peculiar. The state just closed its books on, on last year, the fiscal year, with a $2 billion cash surplus, which, which sounds like we're in absurd abundance. I don't think anybody's absolutely convinced that the gangbusters economy, that, that your tax collectors might be saying is really the true economy.
It's not real.
I mean, measuring jobs and unemployment and so forth is a really peculiar, it's, it's usually a standard part of measuring what the economy is. What's happening out there, I don't think we totally know, and how much, how much things have been just buttressed by government support part of it? I mean, there's, anyway, question marks on all that. Usually that should lead to a short-term thinking, and if you have a, if you have a surplus of the moment, you do some capital stuff, but you don't make a long-term commitment of, this is something that's gonna require funds for each of the next 30 years. I would hope that that's, that's the focus of state leaders for the year ahead. I wouldn't absolutely guarantee it. Part of the reason for that is, next year, you're gonna need a playbook to know all of the players in Annapolis. Leadership is going to change top to bottom in Annapolis more. I mean, I've been on the beat for an awfully long time, and we've never had anything like this. A new governor, a new comptroller, a new Attorney General, the State Treasurer is relatively new, only months on the job. Even the presiding officers in both the Senate and House are only a couple of years into their job. So like the idea, the institutional memory, all the folks will be, inhabit those positions, will, will be surrounded by advisors, and there will be infrastructure behind them and so forth, but fingers in the breeze, sometimes relying, well, how did we do things last year and 12 years ago? And there will be an awful lot of, I don't care, this is what we're doing now. So Mako as an organization is pretty well-positioned to handle that, even though that is a shock for anybody doing this kind of work. We are aggressively bipartisan. We work with all of those players. Everybody who's gonna be coming into a role in Annapolis, we will have a relationship, either one that we've built over the last year or in many cases, we've built over a career. And that's the smart place for an organization like ours to be positioned. We want local governments to be partners in the successes that happen sometimes through Annapolis. That's our representation to you all, you all before them. So we'll continue to make that effort, no matter who's occupying all those seats, but it's gonna be a different town come January, for sure. So with that, there's other stuff in the packet. Most of that's from the Conduit Street blog, which is our main news source to county, county leaders and officials across the state. But we're happy to respond to questions or talk about other things if they're on your mind.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you. I don't know how we would operate in Annapolis without Mako. You know, our attorney does his best to file legislation, but we do rely heavily on you all's work that you do on the street every day in Annapolis, because it is, I've been there and done that, and it can be a challenge. And as you said, Michael, the next year is gonna be quite the challenge, because we, we had eight years of one governor, so things kind of get in a rhythm and a routine, and that's all gonna change in January. No matter who gets elected, it's gonna change. And if we end up with a Democratic governor, there's gonna be a lot of change. So it's gonna be interesting, and we have a lot of legislators, and sometimes, you know, they want to prove themselves, and they'll introduce all kinds of crazy stuff, and so we greatly rely on you all to help guide us through that and help with that. And Kerwin, you know, I guess my question is on Kerwin, do you think there's gonna be any more postponements of implementation?
I, I, I don't know. My, my guess is probably not. My, my guess is that the issues of the day are gonna be, we're likely to see a plan by the end of this calendar year that'll have more nuts and bolts about early childhood education. Part of the vision was getting a lot more three- and four-year-olds, opportunities for publicly provided pre-K, full-day pre-K and free to an awful lot of families. And the, the physical space issue is the biggest challenge there. There's some degree of getting private providers of daycare today to become qualified and licensed providers of pre-K tomorrow. And that transition is, it's just, it's not in anybody's DNA. No one in the public sector knows that kind of business. Getting from here to there, lots of states have done it, a number of counties have made a lot of progress. So it's not a brand-new idea, but it's kind of new to us. That's gonna be its own challenge. We also know that, you know, you go through a big study like the Kerwin Study that turned into legislation and turned into, you know, all these refinements and so forth, and that's presumed on, here's what it costs to educate kids at a high level. And the snapshot of data that was gathered in 2018, well, right now, you can't hire a bus driver in Maryland. For all intents and purposes, I mean, we are, you know, turning over couch cushions, trying to come up with clever ways to bring in people just so you can run buses, so you can serve lunches, and so you can keep the lights on in the schools. And that challenge is, well, if we're built, if we've built everything off of a 2018 cost model, have we already obsoleted ourselves either temporarily or permanently? And those are legitimate questions, but then they beg, well, do you go back and rewrite the bills? And rewrite all those expectations and write up all the formulas again? I think the answer for some folks in Annapolis will be, yeah, it's time to do that. Let's do Kerwin, you know, whatever, 3.3 or something along those lines. I, I don't know what sounds next, but if you wanted to ask me, is the era likely to be later or sooner? I'd say sooner. More expensive or less expensive? I would guess more expensive.
Well, one of the things I was surprised about was, I assumed, that's a bad word, right? That once, even, once Kerwin was passed and we saw the, the 10-year build-out of what percentage increase every county was gonna have each year, that that was the number. I was a little surprised when they're presenting budgets that are over and above those Kerwin numbers. And I've had some conversations during budget time, you know, with the superintendent, I'm like, but, but why, why didn't they, they'd spent all these years studying it? Why did they not factor these things in? And they're like, well, in order to do X, we have to pay for this, and it, and it, and so it's not a number. So we don't have any idea, you know, what we can plan for, you know, in, in the out years. And then what Michael's mentioning on top of it, it's just, you know, such a large part of our budgets. I mean, it's important, we need, of course, we need to educate our children. But, you know, when you have most counties who are maxed out at 3.2 percent in the income tax, and, you know, there's, there's only a few handful left, where, where does that money come from? I mean, until you just continue to go up and up and up in the property taxes. And that, you know, affects everybody else, you know, the, the working, the working people in your county. So I, I thought there was gonna be a certainty to the number, even if I thought it was too high, but there's not.
No, we're lucky in Calvert, we are, you know, we're one of the ones that are pretty close, so. But for those jurisdictions that are way behind, I don't know how they come up with that revenue source in that short a period of time to catch up, because that's quite a bite for some of those counties.
Absolutely right.
You know, we're just lucky we are where we are, but. And the other thing, I guess, is Police Accountability Board. You know, we've got our board established, we've got our charging committee in place, but it seems like there's still some lagging in those provisions.
Yeah, so this could be a 25-minute conversation, and I'll spare you 23 and a half minutes of that, right? But the, like, the 62nd version is, I think I'll start, every county is making a good faith effort to live up to what this state vision is, to have civilian oversight for all of our law enforcement is the vision from Annapolis. Not surprisingly, they've left the follow-through at the county level that's awkward in lots of places. Particularly, I mean, just up the road in Prince George's County, they've got something like 27 municipal and campus police departments that all are gonna go through their administrative hearing boards and so forth. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a really peculiar process they've envisioned. We've, we've gotten two curveballs in the last couple of months, finding out that our senior judges, who would be perfect candidates to chair the trial board, are now declared off-limits for ethics reasons. And they were literally written into the bill as the people you go to to run that process, and now they're off the table, apparently. And second, the training requirement for an administrative charging committee, you're asking citizen volunteers to serve in that capacity. It requires some knowledge, but five consecutive days of eight hours of training for, for, you know, for what's gonna be either a volunteer or a modest stipend conversation county by county. We have a number of jurisdictions who have gone from, we had 18 volunteers for the ACC, and now we're down to none once they heard that they have to take an entire work week and commit literally hour by hour.
Sure, who wants to do it? I mean, think about that board. There's, there's no unicorns and rainbows on that board. I mean, that is the complaint desk. You can't win.
I mean, we interviewed everybody.
Both sides are gonna stay upset at all times.
In Talbot, we interviewed everybody. We, we figured out kind of on paper who, who we were interested in and interviewed a couple extras just in case. And I was actually felt a lot better after the process about who, who we were putting on there and their reasons for, for being there. It wasn't a gotcha board. And why they didn't do like one day a week for five weeks or something like that, or give that virtual option. I mean, they're shooting themselves in the foot with this, and I know we've lost a couple. We lost, like Michael said, the, the Chairman, you know, with the retired judge, and a couple of other people have dropped off too. So they're, they're just, having given us the tools to work with, they have not made it easy.
No, it's not gonna be a fun board for either side of any issue. It is gonna be a fight all the way through. So, I mean, huh, I mean, you do what the law says, right? But it's, it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be easy, by no means.
I think that's well put.
So we're just trying to move forward as best we can, you know, and fulfill the obligations that we've been asked to do.
Right.
But as you've cited, there are quite a few challenges to have all this in place and running smoothly when you look at the challenges that are ahead.
Right. Tough hand to play.
Yeah, but it is, has been an interesting process, have to say that. You know, we did, had, you know, a lot of citizen input. We did our public meetings and to establish, and so we had good input. But moving forward, you know, I say all the time, for us, you know, we're a small county. all the time, for us, you know, we're a small county, it wasn't that hard, but for the big counties, I can't imagine. Prince George's County, Montgomery, Baltimore, I just can't imagine taking on this task. As you said, all those municipalities are all going to run through the same board, and, you know, they talk about part-time, there's nothing part-time about that, they're going to be every day, all day.
I, I think you're right about that, and, and just, just the, the, the shape of this, the idea that it's like two or three paragraphs in the bill, the counties shall do, just handle all this stuff, is, I mean, sadly, it's, it's, it's Annapolis at its worst, where, where that part of the bill should have required, should have taken an awful lot more time, and instead it was, well, we'll, we'll just, you know, we'll send this downhill.
It was hurried through, and it shows.
So, what do you see coming up this year?
Um, I, I think, I, the best case is that there have been enough twists and turns in just the implementation, the non-controversial parts of this. I mean, I think, I, I think I was here a year ago and, and more or less saying, you know, lots of folks were still licking wounds over the bill they passed in two thousand twenty-one, and, and a big chunk of the legislature felt the bill didn't go far enough, and a big chunk of the legislature felt it went too far. So, to bring it up and really change it during the election year felt like a long shot. And ultimately, they ironed out some tiny wrinkles, but they didn't take up anything really substantive in twenty-two. We're post-election, we'll have some new players, and we'll have some more on-the-ground experience. Jurisdictions will say, there's no human being in our county who can actually fulfill this role. That's going to be the case. Um, I think that provides a window to, to come back and look at things, and potentially do, you know, nine changes to the bill that leave the vision intact, but the implementation more reasonable and maybe more balanced. I think that's a reasonable outcome. Now, Annapolis is not perfect at always finding reasonable and sensible outcomes, but I think there's a path here, because it's post-election, and because we've had some things that have, you know, sort of come up that have been out of their hands. We're doing this because the Ethics Commission made this rule, and we have to make these changes, not because we changed our mind or we were wrong in the first place. If everybody stays face, it's fine. But I think there's an opportunity to, to, you know, sort of do some patch-over work here, and for us to be partners in that.
Like I said, I think we've done okay unless they disqualified our judge.
Yes, sir, I think we're the only jurisdiction in the state that has a judge sitting on the trial board.
All right. Aren't we special?
And frankly, I mean, you're, you're fully appointed now, you have a civilian member of.
I thought we were, but I hadn't heard about the judge issue, so I wasn't sure how that was going to pan out. So, we're going to keep moving forward.
Yep.
And hope it all works out. I don't, have any more questions, gentlemen? No, we've, uh, well, you're, we're going to have lunch after this is over, we got a little bit more business to take care of.
So, I have one request.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm making a scrapbook of my year.
Yeah.
In this beautiful setting with your flags, can you take a picture before we?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You need a photographer?
Well, I've got a phone, someone will take the picture.
He does it to us, so he can do it to him.
That's our high-tech, that's how high-tech we are.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gadway just knocks on the wall, and then someone will pop out. See?
Yeah, see?
That's how we save money on IT.
And I do want to thank Laura for her service, as she said, she's, uh, she's on her way out of office, and, uh, you know, all the officers of Mako are elected officials from different counties, so, you know, it's bad enough doing this job and then volunteering to do that job and run another organization, so, thank you for your service. Next item on the agenda is public comment.
The board has adopted resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us to remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and must register in advance. Floor's been open to public comment, will have nobody on the call, so I see a couple speakers here in the room, will ask you to identify yourself, whether speaking as an individual, where you'll be allocated two minutes, or as the designated representative of a group, where you'll be allocated five.
Gentlemen, I'm Leonard Zusa, I live in Solomons, and I'm here as a private citizen. Uh, I'm standing to commend you for the questions you asked and the penetrating observations that you made in light of the announcement. Make sure the public can hear.
It's a personal thing. Computers and telephones and electronic devices, just have it in for me.
We'll restart the time.
But anyway, um, I commend you for your comments, and particularly since Commissioner Hart, I live in Solomons, I totally agree with your observations about the Thomas Johnson Bridge. And President Hans, I think you raised a number of extremely compelling points that consultants and the Department of Planning and Zoning should take into account when looking to something like growth in the county and evaluating traffic. Why? Because the methodology that consultants use may be technically correct, but not necessarily include all considerations. So, for example, in two thousand fourteen, the county had a comprehensive water and sewage plan that set the number of houses that they, residences that they expected to see in the county through two thousand forty. In two thousand seventeen, the state or the county did the last highway plan. In two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty, Calvert County allowed a growth rate of residences that's four times higher than what they approved in their two thousand fourteen plan. These, this is the number of residences that they expected to see through two thousand forty. And then in two thousand nineteen, Calvert County announced another, uh, town center expansion plan that essentially adopted the same target level of residences in two thousand forty as they set in two thousand fourteen, except that they were already allowing far more construction in the county than, uh, was in the plan. And then by two thousand twenty-two, they added an additional, proposed, an additional ten thousand more residences. Um, the whole point of this is that with the last traffic study being done by the state being in two thousand seventeen, there is no way that you could have added an additional ten thousand residences without advising, requiring, a totally new traffic study, which is what they didn't do, and we saw none of the analysis of what was going to be required. So, um, so again, I'm just calling to thank you, calling on you to thank you for the penetrating observations that you made, and ask you to keep asking questions that go beyond, do not be distracted by the methodology of consultants, and that's what the Department of Planning and Zoning depends on. You've got to go beyond that to evaluate all the factors that are going to affect the quality of life in the county. So, thank you very much for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Cormier from Owings, Maryland. Uh, I just want a, a couple bullet points here. Uh, with a fourth bus-tier child, uh, whether I drop him off or put him on the bus, I'm not starting my commute till after nine fifteen. Uh, and through the whole discussion about traffic, uh, there was no discussion of public transport. There's no way for someone in North Beach to get down to Solomons without a car, so, unless we're going to have some sort of public transport, uh, I don't know how we're going to fix the traffic problem. Uh, for Huntington Elementary, are they in the town center, and is that going to affect their ability to get funding for this septic system? And if so, doesn't that bring the point that we should also keep Huntington High School, you know, into a town center so that we don't run into those problems in the future? Uh, register to vote, early voting starts October twenty-seventh. Uh, as we talk about, uh, changing zoning for indoor smoking, I think that's the wrong direction, I think, as a county, we should be coming up with zoning variances that ban indoor smoking regardless of where you're at. And for TDRs, the county defines what a TDR is, sets the number of TDRs required to build something, and sets the price. If the county's going to pay five thousand, why would a landowner ever pay three thousand or charge three thousand to someone else if they can get five thousand? So, I don't understand that free-market bit there. Uh, and if there's two billion dollars in estate surplus, I hope that we're trying to get more of that for us down here to build the things that we need to do. I did a five K at Running Hair with CASA, the systems that use folks. It was a great day, uh, to get people out and bring awareness for opioid abuse, and we talked about mental health today, and that's all, uh, affecting our kids every day. And, uh, to your point for preparedness, uh, again, Puerto Rico is struggling with the hurricane right now, and anything we can do through the county or the state to, to help our fellow Americans, uh, that's something we should be looking at. Thank you so much.
No, no other speakers?
Online?
No speakers online.
All right. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, I attended the, uh, partnership of Calvert Health and Duke Health's cancer care with, uh, President Hans and Commissioner Gadway. Um, it's, I'm going to read this little thing here, it says, "It brings in, in innovative research and leading-edge treatments to our citizens, and gives the Calvert Health staff access to the latest thinking in the cancer care from the experts who are doing the research." Dean Teague said, "What we're building isn't as important as who we're building it for," excuse me, "isn't as important as what we're building, but who we're building it for. The hundreds of newly diagnosed cancer patients treated every year, and the thousands of cancer survivors who need ongoing care and support, it's an amazing benefit for the county, and thank you, Calvert Health." Um, it was football weekend, I saw PAX play La Plata on Friday, and the Solomon Steelers play on Saturday, and I went to Art Fest, and I say it every year, don't just think of Art Fest as just art, there is something there for all walks of life, for every age group. My kids have enjoyed it from when they were just barely old enough to walk to even now. It is such a great event, I encourage everyone every year to go. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner.
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Gadway?
The weather over the last week has been incredible, and I, we saw an amazing turnout at so many different events. As Commissioner Hart mentioned, the Arts Fest, it was so crowded that it appeared to almost have a half an hour wait just to get into the parking lot. I was not able to attend, I wish I could have. Um, Sunday at the Waterman's Festival, amazing turnout up there, I've never seen that many people at that event. Um, they gave out an award for the oldest person there in attendance.
Who won?
Ninety-six. No, I didn't.
No, because I was there.
No, because he was there. Uh, ninety-six years old. Um, the youngest was under one, so it's truly an event for all ages. To see a forty- or a fifty-foot working boat, sit there, start off over here, come up, back into a slip, and hook four corners in seventeen seconds is something you really got to see. So, if you can, you can look it up, there's, there's plenty of videos out there for it. Make it next year, make it, make it a destination to go to next year, it's a great time, and you get to see... The captains were literally from eight years old to over fifty years old. I'm not going to say over sixty or seventy, I'm not sure, but I know there was an eight-year-old captain there, and watching that competition was fun. Um, we have been, on a separate note, we've been, had the pleasure of dealing with pumpkin, spice, everything for the past three weeks. However, Thursday, in less than two days, fall actually begins, so we can officially enjoy fall, we can start enjoying the pumpkins and stuff like that. Looking forward to Thanksgiving, I already saw Christmas decor put out, and we're not even, we're not even in the month of Halloween, so let it come as it comes. On a positive, the most positive closing note I could come up with, Sunday evening, President Biden said that the COVID-nineteen pandemic is over, and I'm happy to hear that. That's all I got.
Commissioner Reeves?
I have nothing, well, I do have something. I do this every week. Um, I want to publicly, um, thank and accept Ms. Nancy Xin's, um, extension of being the emcee for the Calvert County Fair, uh, Miss Tranquility and Lord Calvert event on Sunday, which kicks off the fair officially. That's all I have.
What time is that contest?
That contest, I believe, is, it begins at two.
You better find out if you're going to be there.
I know, that's correct. That is correct.
It's in your book there.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the book.
Thank you. But now I got to read.
A lot of pages.
Thank you. So, I too attended the event at hospital where they announced their, uh, partnership with Duke University, and I, I don't know exactly, but that's probably the most significant improvement to healthcare in Calvert County's history, to think that you can go to Calvert Health Hospital in Prince Frederick and get the same, uh, technical, uh, advisement for your cancer care as you can get at Duke University. And they said that day, if, uh, if your situation is something that they can't handle, you automatically get transferred to Duke. So, uh, that's quite an achievement for Calvert Health, so we can't say enough to commend them for all the hard work it took to get that partnership developed. Um, I too was at the boat docking contest, and the most amazing thing that day I saw was that eight-year-old girl docked that thirty-seven-foot boat. Now, she wasn't the fastest, but she's eight years old, just think about that.
Thirty-two seconds is all it took her.
Eight years old docked that boat.
It's awesome.
Never hit a pollen.
No.
From what I saw. So, um, that was the most exciting thing I saw at the boat docking, and again, Arts Fest, place was packed, but we had excellent weather, and there were so many events going on last weekend that, um, you know, you just can't cover them all. And as Commissioner Reeves says, Calvert County Fair kicks off Sunday with Miss Tranquility Contest.
At two-thirty.
At two-thirty, at the fairgrounds in the main building, and then the fair officially gates open on Wednesday at four o'clock. Um, uh, earlier, there was some discussion, someone asked if we had a goal of preservation in Calvert County, we do. Our goal is forty thousand acres, and I think we're currently at about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand, so we've still got some work to do in that area. We also announced this morning that this is Suicide Prevention Month, and I'm going to announce again, you know, uh, this morning, they said statistically, the age group from seventeen to twenty-four is the largest age group that commits suicide. That's, uh, that's scary. Uh, I have my own thoughts about what probably causes that, that's why I don't do social media, but seventeen to twenty-four is the largest age group of suicides. Um, so...
I thought last year was fifty and older.
No, I wasn't thinking about it.
No, I'm saying, I thought, I thought when we discussed this last year, it was the...
I don't know.
Yeah.
Seventeen to twenty-four.
Yeah, that's terrible.
So, if, if anybody out there, if you need help, if you know of somebody you think needs help, we have resources, there are resources to help you. Don't be afraid to ask, don't be afraid to intervene until it's too late. So, you can call four-one-zero-five-three-five-three-zero-seven-nine, or one-eight-seven-seven-four-six-seven-five-six-two-eight to get help. Please reach out and get help. So, I believe that's all I have.
And we should do a traffic study on Fair Week, one-two-thirty-one.
On two-thirty-one.
And the funnel stand at the...
No, we don't want to, we don't want to do that. I'm looking forward to the weather this coming Friday. I'm just hoping that prediction comes true.
Yeah.
Snow?
Maybe seventy is a high.
Oh, okay.
Seventy, not seventy-one.
Yeah, it's good walking around weather.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking forward to.
Hmm.
So, Commissioner Reeves, you have a weather, oh, yeah, a weather?
You have a weather report?
Yeah.
You have a motion for me?
I, I, um, I can give you a weather forecast later, but for our purposes today, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Y'all have a great day.